Very infrequent, so it's a good chance for us to come out. Practice makes perfect in our job more than anyone else.
Once safely outside the building, these fifth graders talked about the life-saving lessons they learned.
You should always cut duck under a table and stay there until the earthquake is done.
A nonprofit called My Safe L.A. teamed up with the LAFD to organize this local exercise.
My Safe L.A. coordinates with the schools. We coordinate with all the fire agencies. We're actually, you know, our offices are in Fire Department Headquarters. So we collaborate and we do all of the logistics related to these trails.
While this was just an exercise, one student admitted it was still a bit nerve-wracking. When the shaking started, how did you feel?
Nervous and scared.
Scared, but much more prepared. I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. This Week. The first California shakeout was held in 2008 on a much smaller scale. This year, nearly eight million people took part. Los Angeles has long been a city of change, and as we all know, change starts with people. Cindy San Luis tells us how you can make a difference in your community through volunteerism.
Now, our goal is simple. We're going to engage more Angelinos in meaningful service activities. We're going to utilize volunteerism and service as a strategy to help us solve critical local challenges.
That's the goal of the Cities of Service Initiative, We Serve L.A. It's the first campaign in the nation to increase volunteerism through existing programs citywide.
This is an incredible, incredible initiative. We're glad that Los Angeles is leading the way here in California. And I guarantee everybody who does something for their city will feel better about who they are and what they are when they engage.
Cities of Service was founded in New York City in September last year by seventeen mayors from cities around the nation. Since then, more than 100 mayors have gotten involved, representing roughly 47 million Americans.
There are currently 110 cities participating in Cities of Service, but 17 of those are from California.
This incredible initiative, Cities of Service, which is about engaging people to not just volunteer, but to actually make a difference on those issues that we care about the most.
Like education.
The city and the district are partnering on the Student Recovery Day, where hundreds of people will go out and knock on doors and say, "We care about you. Why aren't you in school?"
Economic development will focus on connecting families in need to family source centers for services and assistance towards economic self-sufficiency.
That's not what your city could do for you, but what you could do for your city.
The final priority focuses on the environment with the expansion of the L.A. River Keepers Program. Volunteers will assist with monthly cleanups, conducting bike tours, and organizing cultural events along the river. For L.A. This Week, I'm Cindy San Luis.
To find out more, contact the Cities of Service Los Angeles Chief Service Officer, Rafael Gonzalez, at (213) 435-9919. City leaders break ground on new affordable housing in Sun Valley for the mentally ill. As Gilraeus reports, community backlash hasn't stopped the plan from moving forward.
L.A. Mayor Antonio Villarigosa offers a hug to a local mom suffering from bipolar disorder. Dorothea Hughes had lived with undiagnosed mental illness for years.
I finally had to accept reality when I was unable to get out of bed for days, which resulted in me losing many jobs and many friends.
But now, there's hope with treatment and the soon-to-be-built Glen Oaks Garden Apartments. It will house 60 units for the formerly homeless and low-income mentally ill.
Redeeming lives, creating community, giving people a sense of hope.
Residents will have free access to mental health counseling and job support services on-site. Councilman Tony Cardenas says many Sun Valley residents had objected to the project in their neighborhood, but Cardenas says that attitude is not in the spirit of L.A., or the country for that matter.
It is a country of second chances, that it is a country where, no matter how hard a time someone falls on, not only can you get back up, but we will help you up.
Last year, the city of L.A. helped build 1,600 affordable housing units, doubling the number from five years ago. The city also has 2,200 more units planned.
I'm really excited about the new Glen Oaks building because it will give others with the mental illness, like myself, a supportive environment, which will take away some of the stigma and shame that I sometimes feel.
The Glen Oaks Gardens complex is expected to open in October of next year. In Sun Valley, Gilraeus for L.A. This Week.
Glen Oaks Gardens is the first complex to be built with L.A.'s supportive housing loan funds set up two years ago by the L.A. Housing Department, nonprofits, and corporate sponsors. Doctor, lawyer, or teacher, these are some career possibilities students may consider. But as Cindy San Luis tells us, some teens are learning that geek is chic when it comes to careers in the tech field.
Three, two, one.
It was more than just fun and games at the Third Annual Future Leaders Summit at the Los Angeles Convention Center. Teens got excited learning about how they could pursue careers in technology.
It's just amazing of the stuff you can do with the new advancements in technology. It's just things you would not think could be possible are possible.
Austin Poets helped design this robot, which is used to launch soccers into the stands at his high school sporting events. This 10th grader and his first robotics teammates are serving as an inspiration to other teens.
The whole, like, robot thing really got me thinking to engineering, you know?
It inspired us.
Yeah.
Inspired you too?
Yeah. Inspired us to start leaning towards robotics and engineering and stuff.
The city of L.A.'s Information Technology Agency and the Los Angeles Unified School District partnered together to host the summit and technology expo with the goal of promoting high school students' interest in the field of technology. One of the highlights was checking out technology vehicles, including this Tesla Roadster, an all-electric sports car that can go from zero to 60 in 3.7 seconds.
This probably is their future, that within a few years, they themselves might be driving a nonpluting, all-electric car.
Technology is part of our lives every day, and as they get older, it's going to be part of every career.
Are behind a large fundraising effort to help stock the school library shelves. At a recent community pep rally held at Wilson High School, folks eagerly lined up for a $5 plate of carne asada and rice and beans. It's all part of an effort to raise money to put books in the library of their beloved alma mater.
We fund this committee in response to an article we read in Our Town El Serino. The school librarian, Rebecca Borjes, sounded the alarm that, due to budget cuts, that the library at Wilson hadn't received any funding.
Reportedly, the school has not been able to purchase new books for the library for six years.
There are about 20 members on the committee, but we have alumni from all years that have come together. It's basically a grassroots effort.
Councilman Jose Wezard's office got wind of the effort and donated $1,500 to the cause.
Do you know how important it is that you continue to have books available to our young people and not only have books, but have current books that are modern and that are kept up with the current times?
So far, the book committee has raised a little over $15,000 toward their goal of reaching $25,000 by the November deadline. The committee hopes to raise the remaining $10,000 at a November 6 benefit dinner. For more information on the book drive and the upcoming benefit event, go to WilsonMulesBookDrive.org. An LAPD officer and U.S. Marine is killed in Afghanistan. More American Airlines flights in and out of LAX, and solar-powered parking meters. These stories and more in City Beat. LAPD Officer Joshua Collins, who was on active duty with the U.S. Marines in Afghanistan, was killed by an improvised explosive device, or IED, on October 19. Collins, who joined the LAPD in 2007, was just 28 years old. He's survived by his father, stepmother, and two younger brothers. The Los Angeles Police Federal Credit Union has opened a donation account to assist Collins' family. If you'd like to make a donation, make your check payable to Blue Ribbon Trust for Joshua Collins and send it to Los Angeles Police Federal Credit Union. Attention, Blue Ribbon Trust for Joshua Collins, P.O. Box 10188, Van Nuys, California 91410. American Airlines and American Eagle have announced they will increase services to and from L.A. International Airport. Mayor Antonio Villarigosa, who was on hand for the announcement, says the expanded service will help spur economic development and create jobs in L.A.
They're doing so by increasing departures by 28% or 33 new round trips to the City of the Angels.
We're investing $20 million in the recently opened American Eagle Terminal to expand the number of gates from six to a total of 10.
American Airlines has also received approval from the U.S. Department of Transportation to launch service between Los Angeles and Shanghai starting in April. Mayor Antonio Villarigosa and Councilmember Tom Labange have announced that 10,000 of the city's 40,000 coin meters have been replaced with new coin and card parking meters. The L.A. Department of Transportation says the new meters generated $230,000 in additional net revenue for the city in September, exceeding previous projections.
The majority of this additional revenue has to do with the increased efficiencies of the technology. The rates have not been changed. The rates are the same rates from two years ago.
I would get calls from people to say that I parked in a meter space and it said failed, yet I got a ticket. All this is being changed now because this technology now is instantaneous.
The new meters, which accept coins and credit card payments, operate on solar batteries. The Los Angeles Public Library kicks off its seventh year of its Student Smart Program, designed to help teens excel in school and improve SAT and ACT test scores. The event was attended by more than 200 teens at the Central Library.
We want to give them some of the resources, the inspiration and the resources to be able to plan for college early on.
Student Smart Program was developed in partnership with the Princeton Review. He blazed a trail for Chicano mural art, and now his works of art are making a comeback in L.A. Anna Marcos takes us to the Autry National Center for a special exhibit.
It's a compelling work of art, a mestizo crucified on a cross. The work of Mexican artist David Seciros sparked an outcry when he first painted this mural called America Tropical on Overa Street in 1932.
It was a real slap in the face to L.A. city government and the way that we were treating... It talked about the relationship between how we treated workers and political relationships.
By the end of the '30s, the entire mural was washed out and covered over until the late '60s.
Now, the Autry Museum has opened its exhibit called Seciros in Los Angeles: Censorship Defied.
It's perfect timing, actually, that Autry would have a show of this impact. I think it's really important right now because of all the things that are going on with immigrants and immigrant rights, and this country was founded on immigrants.
The exhibit also opens at a time when the city of L.A. is partnering with the Getty Museum to restore the original Seciros mural on Overa Plaza.
It's so important for us to continue to preserve our public art. It is art that is available to the masses. It is art that brings it to everyone without walls.
Seciros' own artwork is reason enough to earn him a place in history, but his legacy doesn't stop there. He also provided inspiration for generations of artists in the Chicano movement. Barbara Carrasco, whose work is included in the Seciros exhibit, is one of those artists.
He just really inspired me to look at a public space as an opportunity to convey concerns in the community or pride in the community.
In that, he was the original Chicano.
The Seciros exhibit continues at the Autry Museum from now until January of next year. The restored mural on Overa Street is set to open in March of 2012. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The Flight Path Learning Center near LAX celebrates the Centennial of Flight in Southern California with fanfare, inside the museum and outside on the tarmac. The past and present of aviation cross paths at the Flight Path Learning Center at LAX. The Learning Center, both a museum and an education institution, was founded almost 14 years ago as a joint venture between Los Angeles World Airports and the nonprofit group Flight Path. And during this year's annual fundraiser and gala, a tribute to the Centennial of Flight in Southern California, including photos and other memorabilia from the 1910 Dominguez Air Meet.
The meet is a race that was held there, and that was basically the start of aviation in Los Angeles, and it was held out at Dominguez Hills.
The Los Angeles International Air Meet, held from January 10 to the 20th in 1910, was among the earliest airshows in the world and the first major airshow in the United States. As part of the celebration of Southern California's Centennial of Flight, a DC-2 was brought in to dress up the runway, as well as a B-25 bomber thrown in from Van Nuys.
It was the aircraft that Jimmy Doolittle flew off an aircraft carrier to bomb Tokyo six months after Pearl Harbor, so it has a very rich history in World War II and in the Korean War. Behind me is a DC-3, a very historic airplane, which was built in Santa Monica. General Eisenhower said there were four things that helped us win World War II. One was the Jeep, one was the Bazooka, one was the atom bomb, and number four was the airplane behind me, the DC-3.
As for the museum's regular exhibits, there are pilot and flight attendant uniforms from the early days of aviation, as well as photos and models of old airplanes.
It's amazing to us that even people in the surrounding area don't know that we're here, so it would be nice if we just had a little more of our visitors, particularly the people that are in the airline business.
Whether you're an aviation buff or just curious about the history of flight, these aviation treasures await your discovery. The celebration concluded with the gala that evening, attended by some 300 people. Scholarships were also handed out to students who demonstrated an interest in aviation. For more information on the Flight Path Learning Center, go to FlightPath.us. So if you're ever near LAX, that museum is certainly worth a visit. For other ideas, here's this week's list of things to do. The Lakeview Terrace branch of the Los Angeles Public Library hosts Bonita Bikes Dance Art Company on Saturday, November 6, at 2:00 p.m. Bonita Bikes Dance Art Company is celebrating its 30th anniversary season with dance performances throughout the Southland, including the one at the library, located at 12002 Osborne Street in Solmar. This Lakeview Terrace show features a mixture of dance performance and audience interaction. Three dance works will be performed. Dances by Bonita Bikes Dance Art are known for their musicality, use of space, and elegance. For more information, go to DanceArt.org. Griffith Park Park Rangers took a break this Halloween weekend, but the next hike will take place Saturday, November 6. It'll be a six-mile intermediate-level trek, starting at the ranger station at 8:00 a.m. that will follow the mineral wells trail to the composting facility, then along the Skyline Trail to the Golden State Freeway Trail, ending at the ranger station at 11:00 a.m. The Griffith Park Ranger Station is at 4730 Crystal Springs Drive. For more information, call (323) 644-6661, extension 1549. And the Greater San Fernando Valley Chamber of Commerce is gearing up for their 27th Annual Cleanup Day on Saturday, November 6, beginning at 8:00 a.m. This year's project of choice is to clean up along the Metro Orange Line to make it a safer and cleaner place for all Valley commuters. Registration will begin at 8:00 a.m. at the Metro Lot, located at 6060 Van Nuys Boulevard in Van Nuys. Breakfast will be provided. The first 100 volunteers will receive a free recyclable bag, and all volunteers will be treated to lunch after the cleanup day. To join in, go to www.sanfernandovallychamber.com for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, November 3rd, 2010, the day after Election Day. Thank you to everybody who got out and voted yesterday. We are here in the council chambers a little later than usual, two hours later, due to funeral for our fallen officer, Officer Josh Cullens, who, in his capacity as a reserve member of the United States Marines, was laid to rest and, as part of the city family, and a Los Angeles police officer, we are at the cathedral with many of his colleagues this morning. So, we are beginning this meeting at noon instead of at our usual time at 10:00 a.m. I want to thank those council members who are here. We are very close to a quorum. We're just awaiting council members Alakon, Wizar, Carets, Perry, Reyes, and Rosendahl. Mr. Zion is not expected in today, but beyond that, I think we're going to have all members here. Thank you to members of the public who are here today to testify or to watch in person or one of our remote locations in Van Nuys City Hall and in San Pedro City Hall. We're also broadcast live and want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35 throughout the city's cable system, which broadcasts these meetings live and then rebroadcast them each evening that we meet. We're also available online for your convenience through our city's homepage at lacity.org. And all of the agendas and supporting material for items that we consider here are available to the public, just like the council, online there. And those agendas are made available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special agenda items. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that have been noticed for public hearing today, please fill out a speaker card in the back and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms or from one of our remote locations in Van Nuys or San Pedro. We'll be sure to get that in the mix. We also have general public comment, which you can fill out a card for, and you can speak for two minutes on items that are not on today's agenda but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. And lastly, for items that have not been agendized for public comment, you can still fill out a speaker card, but we'll only get to that if a member decides to reopen a hearing again. That means that we've already had one hearing in committee. So, thank you again to those council members who are here on time, council members Cardnis, Han, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, and Wesson. And we are waiting one more of the following council members to begin our meeting, council members Alakon, Wizar, Carets, Perry, and Reyes, who are seven minutes late. If you'll please make your way down as soon as possible. Thank you. Because we are starting at the lunch hour, council members, we will have some pizza available for council members and staff during the meeting in the back. Or just council members on? This is the last form called for council members Alakon, Wizar, Carets, Perry, and Reyes. If you'll please make your way down as soon as possible so we can begin our meeting. It is now 10 minutes after 12:00. Council members Alakon, Wizar, Carets, Perry, and Reyes are late. They'll please join us as soon as possible. Mr. Reyes is here. Please call the roll. Oh, no, we're waiting one... No, Mr. Reyes is here. Please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardnis, Han, Wizar, Carets, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zion, Garcia, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please. Approval of the minutes. All right, Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Laban seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. If you can run through the agenda, colleagues, if I can turn your attention to the agenda, please. Mr. Reyes, I understand you want to continue item number one. Is that correct? Until a date certain? Mr. Reyes? Did you want to continue item one? To what date?
Ninety days, please.
Ninety days, okay. That'll...
That would be February 2nd, 2011.
You sure you want to do that on Groundhog's Day?
(laughing)
All right.
(inaudible)
Without objection, we'll continue to that day. We have items two and three before us, colleagues. Anybody wishing to call those special? Two and three? Do we have cards on either of those?
Item number two, sir.
Okay, we'll call that special for cards on the public. And then, three, we will close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to call three special? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items four through nineteen are items for which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item thirteen has been submitted and distributed to council.
All righty, Ms. Han?
Holding item ten for Mr. Alakon.
All right. We will hold ten special. Thank you. Mr. Krikorian? I'll call nineteen special for Mr. Wizar, just momentarily. I wanted to make sure I got them.
Nineteen for Mr. Wizar.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian does the same. All right. Got it covered. Other specials? Mr. Parks?
Just move both reports on eighteen.
Okay, we'll hold both... Uh, move both reports or hold both reports?
Move both.
Move them, okay. Move both reports on eighteen.
Thirteen, please, thirteen.
Lucky thirteen for Mr. Labange. And if there are no other specials?
What did it...
About thirteen. Thank you. Please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items twenty through thirty-eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. There is a request to continue items thirty-four and thirty-eight to December 7th, 2010.
Okay, do we have cards on any of these?
Sir, we do. Items twenty-four, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-one, and thirty-seven.
All right, we'll close the other public hearings. And I'm sorry, you said thirty-four and thirty-eight? There's been desire to continue to the 7th of December?
Correct, December 7th.
No objection, we'll continue thirty-four and thirty-eight. We still are waiting twelve members. We do have eleven now. We're still waiting Mr. Wizar, Mr. Carets, and Ms. Perry, who are late. We need twelve members for the ordinances, so until we have them, why don't we hold those six ordinances? That leaves us with the balance. Any other specials, colleagues?
Thirty-seven.
Mr. Reyes?
I want to make sure that we continue item thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven?
Yeah. And colleagues, I'll be introducing a resolution to support legislation to allow local jurisdictions to use discretionary approval of applications for installation of solar panels to achieve land use neighborhood compatibility. So, that'll be introduced as well, but I want to continue thirty-seven for one week.
Okay, for one week. That will continue till November the 10th.
Correct.
Okay. Continue thirty-seven. Mr. Wizar is here so we can take up the awards. We'll hold twenty-four still on the table for the card, but if we can take up the balance... And Ms. Perry is here too, so we can record her for the votes.
Put Perry out.
Okay. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please. I'm sorry, Ms. Han?
I'm sorry, I need to ask, should we reconsider item four?
Okay, we'll come back to four in just a second. We can go to thirty-nine and forty. And, Mr. Parks, any recommendations?
I recommend that we handle thirty-nine in open session. It's a refund from Office of Finance, but forty, I think, should be in closed session.
Okay, we'll hold forty for closed. If we can please run through the recommendation on thirty-nine.
Mr. President, item thirty-nine, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $105,404.28 in the case entitled Creator Syndicate Incorporated versus City of Los Angeles.
All right, let's go ahead. If anybody wishes to be heard on that, prepare the roll on that settlement and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. We will wait on the special meeting. We have to stay in the special meeting once we're there, so we'll go through the regular meeting and come back to that. It's now time for a general public comment. I'm sorry, we have one on continuation?
You want to reconsider four?
Forty-two. Oh, yeah, and reconsider four and put that on. Sorry, forty-two, let's take up as well. That's a continuation agenda. Do you want to call that special?
Actually, forty-two, we should note and file because that referred to Proposition Nineteen, which did not pass.
Okay, without objection, we'll note and file forty-two. And let's reconsider four, please, for Ms. Han, if we can open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And we'll call that special for you?
Four.
Number four.
Yes, and do you want to do it right now?
Well, we got the public comment first, but then we'll come back to it. Our first speaker is Daniel Garcia. After that will be Dr. Clyde Williams.
Good afternoon, country.
Good afternoon.
But I'm here on behalf of a... A person who is in the District of Tony Cadena, and he has an issue on accessibility, and the corner that has not been curbed, it's very dangerous for people like him because he had been... In a lot of times, he had been almost hit by a car. And I don't want my friend to be hit by a car. So, I don't think I mean that Tony Cadena will want that to be considered, too. So, I gave Tony Cadena the email corresponding to my request, and I hope that Tony Cadena will be responding in the City of LA reporting to see to this constituent. Other than that, I want to say that there's not enough affordable and accessible housing. There's a lot of affordable housing, but there's not accessible housing. Please make a demand for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Appreciate your comments today. Dr. Clyde Williams is next. John Walsh will follow him.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Sireno, Northeast LA. Thirty-seven... Sorry, thirty-four and thirty-eight. I was planning on discussing them, but since they're not on the agenda, I can discuss them during public comment. What's happening with the modified coverage plan? Where is it? I've never seen a hard copy or a floppy copy of it anywhere. If you go search on the Internet, even the Internet can't find it. So, one of these days, maybe you should actually have a modified coverage plan report someplace. Some people call it a modified coverage plan. Maybe there's more than one. We don't know. And that's one of the things. It's really important because there's a lot of money depending upon it, and one of the things in the background is that it is modified even further with redeployment during the peak fire season, commonly called brush fire season. So, how can you modify something that doesn't exist? So, it seems to be a rather flexible response to trying to do something with money, but the brush fire clearance already exists. And prevention for a fire department, prevention is always better than suppression. So, what happens? The brush fire clearance requirements for the City of Los Angeles are the most stringent in the United States, but they're not stringently enforced in many of the hillside areas. All you have to do is drive Mulholland. All you have to do is drive even Valley Boulevard in El Sireno, and you can see that brush is not cleared, in flagrant violation of the brush clearance requirements of the LA Fire Department. If you don't prevent, you're going to have to fight it someplace, and you're redeploying a lot of resources away from structures in the low-lying areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. John Walsh is our next speaker. After that, we'll go to Van Nuys, and Anka Patel will follow Mr. Walsh.
It's freezing in here. My hands are numb. Turn the thermostat up, save energy, be politically correct, save money. I'm just absolutely freezing. Go there right now, find out. We predicted all the winners. Our predictions were correct. Go also to HollywoodDems@gmail.com. That's for email, gmail at email. And also go to Facebook, Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I, and of course, at Twitter, HollywoodDems. Pizza, incidentally, is a junk food. You're serving pizza in the back? I'm interested in your health. Please, live your politically correct life. Don't impose it on us. Meg Whitman, did you see Meg last night? And she was classy, but standing right next to her was her son, Griff Harsh V. He was protecting her in case any Hispanic women came and tried to attack her. You know, he has a criminal record for beating up his Hispanic girlfriends, but thank God. I know, I don't even believe in God, but I believe there is some higher power that got Fiorina and Meg Whitman out of our lives. If I come here till I'm 110, I promise you, I will never curse with my breath, Meg Whitman and Carly Fiorina. And I want to thank George Soros, because we all knew the money spent on the pot. All that pot money got out about four or five points of youth voters that buried them. And that was the only point of pot. Pot is evil. Pot, we got rid of everything, you know? My psychotic ratings, conventional wisdom today. Go to our website and see, we predicted Jerry in a blowout. Look at the mongoose destroying the cobra. It's been on our website for five months.
Thank you. Anka Patel is our next speaker, and Van Nuys. After that will be Walter Bechtel in council chambers. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you. I'd just like to say that we do support you when you make good decisions, when you do good work, when you have our best intentions at heart. And we are here to work with you, right? Now, there's a difference between politics and government. You guys are too involved with politics, marginalizing one group of people to benefit yourselves or to benefit another group of people. From the psychotic ratings of John Walsh, great stuff. Dr. Clyde Williams always makes very fine points that unfortunately seem like they go unheard. Zuma Dog comes in and yells up and down. He makes good points as well. And that's what we're here to do, right? To make sure that you guys listen to what's going on, what people are saying. And I came here yelling and screaming as well, right? You and your $178,000 salaries, you don't deserve it, all of that kind of stuff. And I've actually met with people in the DWP, who I also have ranted against. I've met with these people, and I understand that there are good people working in the system. There are people hardworking that want to do good stuff, that want to benefit society as a whole. But your egos, how important you think your positions are, how you elevate your decisions, your attitudes, your ideas above the rest of the city is pathetic. You need to get more involved with the people and actually respond. Now, some of you councilmen do a better job than others. SB 1818, the one that Ed Reyes is sitting on, is a joke. Noel Weiss comes in here and he blows up on it. We can't even get information that tells us how much low-income housing has been created and destroyed, and that's the barrier that we are really working on, information. Please.
Thank you. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. Good afternoon.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, that's right, it's afternoon already. I was here at 10 o'clock this morning. But I was going to say something about some pseudo people filing cases in the courtroom, Zuma Dog, et cetera. I think the people should be reminded that that case was only able to get through because those people have money to file a lawsuit. Persons like myself have our cases immediately dismissed in a district court in a little-known participle of the law that was enacted a couple of years ago that says that if you're not represented by a lawyer, that your case can immediately be thrown out as frivolous just simply because you don't have enough money to file a lawsuit. And I hope that some of the new people that are in office now can recognize that, and maybe we can get our cases going, Mr. Byrne. Hopefully, maybe... We never got anything going in the music, though. I was hoping... We were hoping he could get that started. Maybe that'll change as he is a governor. Also, I wanted to say something about this closed caption thing. We're still having problems with the closed caption. It's not synced with when the speaker is saying something. It's delayed by approximately one minute. So, if I say something now, you won't see what it says for a minute from now. Can we get somebody else? Don't we have somebody over there in Hollywood that can do some... Or some stenos over at the courtroom that aren't employed, instead of going out of the state of California to Texas? Texas isn't everything. They print all our money, they think they're everything. Can't we keep employment in the state of California, especially in our city? Can we hire our own steno? It seems to be what the idea is, to keep the money in the state, and not send it somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our general public comment for today. We'll go to first item called special, which was item two. We called special for a card from the public. And John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward, be followed by Tom McCarty.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S. Over 80,000 successful server requests a month, 1 million a year. Emailing at HollywoodDems, the E-M-S, at gmail dot com. Twittering at HollywoodDems, and Facebooking at Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I. We are 100% in favor of vacating bunker hell. And we're also in favor of 100% of the mitigated negative declaration, and thank you. As you can see by my forehead, I can prove I voted. Thank you.
Tom McCarty is our next speaker.
Good afternoon, everybody. Just willing to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Item two, any members of the council wishing to be heard? If not, we have the recommendation before us in Council District One. Go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Well, next go to item number four. Ms. Han, is to call that special? Ms. Han, item number four. Ms. Han, item number four.
I'll be lucky to get them by six. Roast chicken.
Crickets.
Wine.
Item four is on, is up now?
Okay. Oh.
Item four.
Hold on one second. Item four, colleagues, I would just like to send this back to my committee, TCT, with your agreement. Thank you.
Okay. There's no objection, we'll go ahead and refer that to TCT Committee. Next item, called special, please. That would bring us to item number 10, called special for cards, and by Mr. Alarcon. Okay, let's take the cards first, and I'd like to ask Daniel Garcia to come forward first, and then Dr. Clyde Williams.
I don't know what the intent of this, but I speak on behalf of people with disabilities. It seems to me that they need for clarification or documentation. I think we can do a better job, I think, in providing and promoting people with disabilities job opportunities. This is an excellent documentation where you can actually provide a better way or initiative to businesses, to make it more accessible for people with disabilities. However, there's nothing in this documentation about accessible. Also, I want to say that there should be a quota, maybe, 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 I guess, that they really have a city of full-time employees working in the city, consisting of 70 sections. How about if we create another section, okay, where you can, where a business can hire people with disabilities, one person, one person per business, and a half, and a half, and a half time? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that, will be Beverly Kenworthy.
Dr. Clyde Williams, actually, I saw this online, but I also heard it on KPCC yesterday, but it was reporting there that it was for the county of Los Angeles, not the city of Los Angeles. So, I think the ordinance or the resolution should include a specific reference only to the city of Los Angeles. I'd highly, I'd also recommend that you limit the number of employees, because there are some very large corporations in L.A. that really don't need an 8% improvement. Maybe to 20 employees or less. Try to support and promote the small businesses. Also, there's a question as to how about an 8% reduction in the security or bond that they have to propose. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Beverly Kenworthy is next, after that, will be Ann Williams.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Beverly Kenworthy with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. The L.A. Chamber of Commerce is in support of this ordinance, which we believe will encourage and support local jobs created by small and large businesses throughout Los Angeles. We believe the ordinance is appropriately written to assure that local jobs are to be created. We know there's some concern about doing business with companies who don't have local employees, who have local employees but are not headquartered here in Los Angeles. We think it would not be appropriate or good economics to exclude these companies from the ordinance, because they are some of L.A.'s major job creators in Los Angeles. Companies headquartered in other locations like Wells Fargo with 13,000 employees in L.A. County, Bank of America with 11,000 employees, and Office Depot with 500 employees, are major employers in our city and in your districts. They also purchase billions of dollars of goods and services from other local businesses and give millions of dollars to arts and social service agencies in our city. If the goal here is to create jobs for Angelinos, we believe that you should support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Williams is our last speaker. Item number 10.
Good afternoon, I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association, here to speak in support of the Local Preference Initiative. This is an effort by the city council to shop local, and it recognizes and tries to account for the higher cost of doing business in Los Angeles. The beauty of this initiative from CCA's perspective is not only that it has a clear and direct link to its stated objective, but also that it does not put an undue burden on the businesses themselves. In return for being present in L.A. in a meaningful way and maintaining their business tax registration certificate in good order, local businesses will be given a small payback for doing what they're already doing, which is providing needed goods and services, paying taxes, and keeping Angelinos employed in this terrible economy. Thank you for your support for this.
Thank you as well. Thank you for your testimony today. We'll go to the chairman of the Jobs Committee first, Mr. Alarcon, who will be followed by Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Kokoyan.
Councilmembers, for dating back to 1993, I've been a huge advocate for local preference. However, as chair of the committee, I have to report to you that this is not the local preference that I would have crafted. I believe that it is weak in the sense that it only requires a company to have 50 employees. It does provide for companies that have 50% of their jobs here, and I support that. But with regard to the 50 employees, the problem is that national corporations and multinational corporations can easily have 50 employees here and will be in a better position to get the 8% preferential treatment than companies that are local. So, I absolutely disagree that local companies will be the necessary benefactors of this. I believe that the intent is to create better competition for our local companies. So, I've introduced an amendment with Ms. Han that would say that the company, and I believe this is very, it's not as strong as I would have liked to seen it. But I would have at least liked to seen, liked to see the new company that qualifies for the 8% preferential treatment create at least 50 new jobs. That's not based on scale, it's just arbitrary, but very similar to the motion in this current condition, it's arbitrary. But I would ask you to at least make a national corporation who's going to compete with local companies, you know, to create something new of this, rather than have the existing staff people and still compete with local companies with an 8% preference. I just don't think that we're benefiting local companies as much as this is proposed, purported to benefit. So, as a chair of the committee, I pass this out of committee with an understanding that we could work on the language. But frankly, I don't think it's as strong as it should be for local preference. In order for us to benefit, we, I would ask, I would offer a friendly amendment, and I believe Mr. Kokoyan would concur, that we also allow for companies that are headquartered in Los Angeles to get the preference. I would add that, offer that as a friendly amendment, if you'll accept it.
Add that.
Yeah, add that just to the report as it is. But I would also ask that we require the companies that are getting this 8% preference to create 50 new jobs. I don't think that's a lot to ask, we can study it in the interim, but I believe if we do not make that change, that more national companies that are not based in Los Angeles will benefit from this than local companies. I urge your consideration and, you know, offer to work on this. I think it's great that the mayor offered, and Mr. Kokoyan and Mr. Parks support, local preference. But to really have the impact that it's purported to have, I think we need to tinker with it a little more.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody from staff who worked on this document? I'd like to ask a question if anybody, whether it's contract administration, whether it's CLA, CAO, anybody, please. Business team. Who's the business team worked for?
I am Brett Messing from the mayor's office.
Oh, so you're with the mayor's office?
Yes.
What's your title with the mayor's office?
Chief Opperman Officer of the Office of Business and Economic Policy. So, I work for Austin Butner, and I'm a senior advisor to the mayor.
Okay. What's your name again, your first name?
Brett Messing.
Brent?
Brett, B.R.E.T.T.
Brett, thank you, Brett. My main question is this, is this particular motion, should it be enacted, would this apply, for example, to a bid that maybe B of A was involved in? Or, let's think of another large company, say Parsons. Parsons, they're a big engineering firm. They're not headquartered in Los Angeles, although they probably have some workers in some office with an address that has Los Angeles in it, which is in the city of Los Angeles. Would it apply to them if that was the case?
It would apply to companies that employ Angelinos. And so, with all due respect to Councilman Alarcon, the intent of the preference is to create jobs for Angelinos, not necessarily benefit L.A. businesses, but to create jobs for Angelinos, whether they come from L.A.-based businesses or businesses that are not based in L.A.
Okay, but as, before Mr. Alarcon, Councilmember Alarcon's motion, there's nothing in it that requires any creating of jobs, is there? In the motion?
There's not a...
There's no language in there that requires if they win the bid and they get the benefit of this 8%, that they in fact create jobs.
Well, it requires that they employ Angelinos, which is...
No, but see, there's a big difference. Excuse me, excuse me, one second. If I own a company and I have 100 employees already, and I get a contract from the city of Los Angeles, and I get the benefit of being within 8% of the lowest bid, and they give it to me, because I happen to be in that bid range, and I already have 100 employees, and I get that contract, there's nothing that requires me in this motion, if I get that contract and the benefit of that 8%, that I actually create jobs.
That is true both as to L.A.-based businesses and non-L.A.-based businesses that have 15 employees. I would point out that 30% of the municipalities and states across the country have local preference laws of different structures. None of them require additional employees, as you're suggesting.
See, Brett, that's my point. Brett, as a policymaker, as I read this, as I read this, I don't agree that your main point, that are the genesis of this motion and the purpose of this motion is so that when people win bids with the city of Los Angeles, that jobs are created. What I don't like about the motion, the way it's written right now, is that there's not a direct nexus requirement or proof that jobs were created for Angelinos if they get that benefit of the 8%. See, that's my point. You said it accurately when you said X number, and I'm not disputing whether it's 30% or not. But what I liked about what you said is that there are many municipalities that already have this kind of ordinance, but you correctly pointed out, the language is different very likely than ours. And my point is, I don't think that the way the language is written on this one is ready for us to pass and start benefiting huge companies and small companies or what have you, to be able to be non-competitive, in my opinion, and then get the benefit of that, however, not necessarily giving, creating jobs for Angelinos. That's where, I don't read that into this motion. I don't interpret that in this motion.
I guess, Councilman, I would have two comments. One is that the structure of our ordinance is modeled after Philadelphia, which is considered to be the best practice across the country. So, we took a hard look at how local procurement has operated throughout the country and followed sort of the Philadelphia model. Secondarily, one important role that local preference will play is not just in job creation, but in job retention. So, when you have a company that's doing very poorly, the ability to get a city contract, whether they be an L.A.-based company or a national company, may enable them to retain and keep Angelinos working, whereby if they didn't get that contract, they would let, fire, you know, a number of their employees. So, I believe that if you put a requirement to add employees, I think you're gonna, you're gonna reduce the effectiveness of this policy very meaningfully, to the extent that it will not achieve its objective.
Well, I ran out of time, but I'll push my button again. You and I are gonna have a little fun right now.
Mr. Kokoyan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, the city of Los Angeles spends a little over $1 billion a year on procurement of goods and contracted services. And in doing that, we don't draw any distinction between a business that's based in the San Fernando Valley and a business that's based in South Dakota. We don't make any distinction between spending our money here within the city in a place where it will create jobs and stimulate our economy, or sending that business to New York or Illinois. To me, that absolutely makes no sense whatsoever, especially at a time when unemployment is spiking here in the city at record levels. So, it makes every bit of good sense to try to provide a preference to businesses that are committed to our city, whether they're headquartered here or whether they're employing our citizens here in Los Angeles. And not only is that my opinion, but the very same USC professor that analyzed the tax holiday that we considered here, Mr. Alarcon's motion, which we all passed and which moved forward, the very same professor that analyzed that and talked about it as being a job creator that would help stem the tide of businesses leaving Los Angeles, stem the tide of headquarters leaving Los Angeles, and preserve jobs, not just create, but preserve jobs. The very same person who analyzed that has also analyzed this proposal and said that this would first of all be at no cost to the city of Los Angeles, but it would have a substantial positive impact on our economy, creating as many as 10,000 local jobs. So, to tinker with this, to consider it further, to try to narrow the scope of it, I think, is going in exactly the wrong direction. We should not be trying to differentiate here between who the employer is, we should be focusing on who the employee is. And when we have a business that has a commitment to this city, that has 50 employees here right now, you bet we should give them a preference so that that number doesn't turn into 30 employees, or 20 employees, or zero employees next year. And that's the reason that the 50-employee threshold is important, because those 50 employees, those 50 constituents of ours, depend on their pay, for their paycheck on that business continuing to thrive. And it doesn't matter whether the address on the letterhead says Canoga Park or New York, as long as the paycheck that they're getting comes here and is delivered to the city of Los Angeles. That's what this preference is about. That's why I urge your support.
Mr. Parks. Mr. President, I just want to carry on with Mr. Kokoyan said. I think a couple of things about this ordinance is that, first of all, we take a step back and realize we're spending a billion dollars, and only 16% of it goes to businesses located in L.A. That should be the first, really, emphasis on increasing that percentage. Clearly, if we have the ability to go through this and create jobs, that's a benefit. We're trying to get businesses that already have employees, that are paying our business tax, that are not getting city business to benefit from our expenditures. And so, I think the key is, is that it's not a full employment act for new businesses, nor do we have the ability to add, ask them to add more resources. They're gonna get more work from the cities, financial wherewithal. We can do something to benefit our economy by investing in our own local businesses. That's our first mission. If somebody in trying to get an 8% preference chooses to add more people or move into the city, that's just an added benefit. We know today that 85% of the money that we're spending does not go to L.A. businesses. And so, rather than put them on the same position of a business in Fontana and in Minnesota, we're saying, when they compete for city contracts, we need to give them a preference. Now, if they get city work and have to expand their workforce, that's even better. But if they get city work and spend the money and provide the product we need, we have benefited by a variety of things, maybe increased gross tax receipts, maybe even more sales tax, maybe even more parking tax, a variety of things, because the employees from L.A. businesses are now gonna have more money in their pocket. So, I think we need to look at it and separate the real desire to create more jobs, to the point of saying we're trying to create more business in Los Angeles... business in Los Angeles businesses. That's what we're trying to do as a primary issue. I would hope that we can move forward on this issue today and get it moving. But certainly, I would hope that the motion that Mr. Alarcon brought forward, I would hope that we take the business team and the professor from SC, get an opportunity to look at that and see what the pros and cons of it is as relates to this issue, or is it a totally separate issue? And determine whether there's a need of an amendment, as this is going through the process for a new ordinance, or do we create a second ordinance to talk about creation of jobs as a primary focal point. He studied clearly the benefit of giving more business to LA businesses. He has not studied the creation of business. And I think that's the distinction I hear in the discussion. But certainly, I would hope we move forward on this. And secondly, that we take that motion seriously and get it to the business team and to the professor at SC, and have them evaluate it and see where it fits into this discussion.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. And Mr. Krikorian, I appreciate you bringing this back. I actually brought this in a couple of years ago. The City Attorney said we couldn't do it. Now they refined it and fixed it, and I'm glad you brought this back, because it's something we need to do. Did I hear correctly, Mr. Alarcon, in your amendment, Ms. Alarcon, your amendment was only if they're a headquartered corporation in Los Angeles? Is that what your amendment was?
No, one amendment, it was a friendly amendment that Mr. Krikorian accepted. That was if they are headquartered in Los Angeles, that they would also qualify for the 15%.
Also, in addition to the 50?
Yeah. Essentially, there are two criteria. This would add a third.
So any one of the three?
Yeah. I'm just questioning the first criteria, 50 employees in--
I'm fine with that. I misunderstood your amendments. I wanted to clarify that, because I was concerned that we'd only say, that we'd only say if you're a headquartered corporation, which we have virtually none of the large corporations. So, and that's because we've been a business unfriendly city, and we've driven them out of this city, and we need to find ways to drive them back. I think this does that. And so I'm supportive of it. Thank you. And, Mr. Alarcon, I support now your amendment. I appreciate your clarifying that for me. This, okay.
When it's friendly--
On mic. Okay. On the mic, what?
Mr. Krikorian?
On my time?
As I understood Mr. Alarcon's motions, one was friendly, which was to add the element of a headquartered company qualifying. But then separately, he's also moving, and it's been seconded by Ms. Hahn, a requirement that the, in order to qualify under the 50-employee test, it would have to be 50 new employees. And that's not a friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you.
And that somebody objected to it, correct?
Yeah.
Is there an objection? Mr. Labange?
No.
I think, I'm sorry, the clerk corrected us. It's 10 A. It's actually being circulated, so people can vote on it. It doesn't have to be accepted. It's not accepted as friendly or unfriendly. We'll have a vote on 10 A. Mr. Labange?
I wanted to stand up for Compton and San Fernando and cities around us. Are they included in this?
Yes.
How far east?
LA County.
Uh, like LA County. Could it be by miles? Could it be by miles? What about someone who manufactures just outside in San Bernardino, Riverside County, and that industrial built near Ontario Airport? I'm asking geographically, from a sense here. Because if you did by miles, let's say you took the width of from Long Beach to Palmdale and circled, I don't know. I mean, some parts, you go, you could go further out. I think Disneyland's not that close. But you could go southeast to pass LA County into Orange County, and yet you could go further north. I don't know if it makes sense. I would also like to have somebody, and I greatly appreciate the business team and the focus that Mayor Villagosa's put on the business team in the last few years, which I think is a good aspect. I think that was a very strong aspect of former Mayor Reardon in trying to deal with these issues. But I don't want to see us shut ourselves out if someone doesn't manufacture. Will it hurt us, what if there's nobody manufacturing what we need in there? If you could answer the question. And if we really studied this detailed, how much benefit it could be?
I'm not sure I understood your first question. Let me answer the second one. In terms of the benefit, it's hard to quantify, because you don't know what businesses, you know, haven't bid for city contracts because of the higher cost of doing business in Los Angeles, but once they're provided this 8% local preference, will now bid for city contracts. So what we expect is that you'll see a significant behavioral change, and that you'll see a lot more companies come forward and bid for contracts.
Is there somebody who's on our door here that if someone walks in, because people have said, "I want to do business with the city. I don't know how to do it." You know, is there someone who's a greeter, who could direct people how to get a contract? Do we have to find that person?
Right. Well, I think we've made the process to define yourself as being a local company very easy. And then I think ultimately, part of that responsibility will fall with the business team to--
Yeah, I think we should articulate that a little bit more on that issue, that we opened up. This does not include the port, does not include airport, does not include DWP?
I mean, I think that we would like to see the various proprietaries adopt a local preference that is similar to what hopefully the city will adopt here today.
And I strongly believe, members, if we as a team, whether it's the city and the proprietaries, LA County or LA Unified, there's billions of dollars of stimulus that could be done in this area if we think it out. I welcome any review by the business team and that, whether it's from UCLA or USC or anywhere that would give us a focus on that to make sure that we're doing the right thing to take advantage of that. I support the business team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a quick comment. It's a no-brainer for me. Obviously, anything we can do to bring business back into Los Angeles, make it more business-friendly, is in the best interest of everybody in the city. Thanks for your work. Got my support.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon?
Councilmembers, first of all, I pulled up the Philadelphia ordinance, and it is quite different than the one that is being presented here. This one only requires that you occupy a building six months before applying for the contract. In Philadelphia, you're required to occupy and have employees for 18 months prior. So this is, you know, you can, you can think you're doing the right thing here for the right reasons, but until you delve into it. I also reviewed the study by the good professor, who, whose study supported the local business tax preference with Mr. Smith and I introduced. And I can tell you, there's no reference to this maintaining 50 jobs requirement in the report. What it does say, it speaks to general local preferences as being beneficial to a community. And it says that there is, not only the, it specifically says there is a job creation effect that I believe is diminished by this provision of 50 employees that are maintained, that have always been there, and we're not gaining any benefit from it, yet we're giving potentially national corporation an 8% preference. National corporations, what he does say is that, and the benefits are specifically, in his reports, going to local businesses. No benefits are going to outside companies. What he is saying is they already are advantaged by economies of scale, and they are advantaged by, what you said, Mr. Smith, the high operating cost of doing business in Los Angeles. That's why it's important for us to craft a local preference ordinance that gives true benefits to local businesses, not to national corporations. So that, so I would prefer having an opportunity to work on this, to make it much stronger, so we can have much greater impact. But there is pressure to crank this out quickly without doing what I consider to be a more full analysis to create a preference that is beneficial. So on the fly, I said, well, if we're gonna do this, then let's at least require them to create 50 new jobs. But frankly, if we want to model it after Philadelphia, then let's model it after Philadelphia. Let's put the 18-month requirement that you be in Los Angeles for at least 18 months. You can't just set up shop six months before, not have any employees until the day before you file the bid. I mean, come on. This can be abused. And I really think we need to rework this. But the alternative to that, just to get it out, and then we can come back in a year and analyze it, is, I'm asking you to require companies that if they do not have the 50% employees in Los Angeles, then they must create 50 new jobs. I think that's a simple request for some of the large-sized contracts we have. Although it's not perfect, it's a temporary measure. I'd like to come back and do this in a more holistic way. Give us a year, and we'll do that. But to crank this out in its current form, I believe will benefit more national corporations with dollars going outside of Los Angeles, not circulating in our economy three times, which local companies benefit us from. And that is the whole point of local preference, folks. It's not only just to create jobs, and in this case, it doesn't even create jobs, but it's also to benefit the circulation of dollars in our local economy, which has a multiplier effect on creating jobs elsewhere in our local economy. And so, this is, at best, a weak local preference provision. I believe we can do much better.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. Brett, excuse me. You mentioned the Philadelphia. You mentioned that they seem to have a best-practice reputation on this particular kind of ordinance. But where's the proof that they do in fact have best practice? Let me give you an example of what happened in these chambers in the last couple of years. We were considering banning Styrofoam in the city of Los Angeles, first by the city itself, then within the city parameters. And something that was talked about tremendously during that debate was, the city of Santa Monica, they banned Styrofoam containers when it comes to takeout at their restaurants. And it was touted about how successful it was, and how it's great for the environment and all those things. Motherhood and apple pie, it was sold. So what I did is I had the city staff go to Santa Monica, which isn't very far from here, and say, okay, have us, give us, have them give us the report that shows the proof of success. Well, their staff said, "We don't have any proof." We passed the ordinance. We're saying that it's great, but we have no proof that it actually is even being implemented properly, how much gross tonnage of Styrofoam have been reduced, et cetera. They had absolutely no data whatsoever. And yet, the big city of Los Angeles was taking this for granted, that that in fact was proof that we should follow suit, and that we should actually pass such an ordinance, based on what they had done successfully. And the fact of the matter is, there was no proof of their success. So my question to you is, what proves to us that Philadelphia's best practice, as you put it, is in fact a best practice, and therefore we should adopt it?
Before I answer that question, I just like to respond to Councilman Alarcon. I have in my hand the city of Philadelphia's local business entity certification application, and it says I have a valid business privilege license during the preceding six months. So I'm sorry, but your representation of what Philadelphia's ordinance is, is not correct.
It's 18 months. Here's the ordinance.
Well, I have the certification form, so maybe you want to--
I don't know what that says. This is the ordinance.
Well, you guys argue on your time. The bottom line is, you have a document saying six months, and I don't dispute the fact that that document isn't real. And it appears that Councilmember Alarcon has a document, and I don't dispute that that's real, that's not real either. So the bottom line is, once again, here we are trying to push an ordinance in the second-largest city of the country. We procure, how much was that, Mr. Krikorian?
1.2 billion.
1.2 billion dollars. And this would actually apply to all of that 1.2 billion, I presume, right? Whether it's a $100 million bid, or a million-dollar bid, et cetera. And if it's a $100 million bid, that means somebody can have the latitude of $8 million and still get the bid, if they qualify for these simple terms. Yet, at the same time, as Councilmember Alarcon, and I've owned a business in this city myself, what Councilmember Alarcon brings to all of our attention, which I think is something that we should consider, and that is the fact that when you're looking at larger bids, you're gonna look at multinational corporations that might have a smitten of employment here. But yet, at the same time, they might have 100,000 employees around the world, and they have a couple hundred employees in the city of LA, and they beat out a business that had 500 employees in the city of LA, which is 90-plus percent of their employment base of that corporation. See, that's what I don't like about this. I think that what happens is, there's inadvertent consequences that will in fact hinder small and medium-based firms that are actually based here in the LA region, giving jobs to Angelenos. And also, instead of having shareholders that are around the world perhaps, like a multinational corporation, they benefit from that, and that money dissipates all over the world. But yet, when you have a mom-and-pop or a sole proprietor here in our region, much more of that money actually stays right here. So I think that the intent is wonderful, but I think the language isn't ready. It's not ready for my vote. And again, I've owned a business in this city. I employed people. I signed those checks every month. I had to deal with the ebbs and flows of those responsibilities. And I would love to help the businesses like that in this city. I think that this ordinance is not ready for primetime. This ordinance is not ready for a vote of this council. That's the problem that I have with it. It needs more work, especially when you, sir, rightfully so, are waving a document saying it's six months, and a council member is waving a document, you're talking about the same exact thing, and he's waving a document saying 18 months. Why don't we verify these things? Why don't we make sure we have it right?
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Krikorian?
Just let me respond briefly to Mr. Cardenas, who has presented a scenario suggesting that these large companies would somehow have an advantage over a small local company because of this preference. Of course, that would not be the case, because the local company would apply, the small company would be entitled to the exact same preference. So yes, it's true that this would not equalize the playing field as for efficiencies of scale or otherwise. It's not going to give an extra advantage to the small business, but it will certainly allow businesses, large or small, here in Los Angeles, to compete more effectively against businesses that are in Riverside County, or San Francisco, or Indiana. And that's the point of this. So when we talk about a local preference for a big company, creating an untoward advantage for them, yes, it does. It creates an untoward advantage for them in competing against cities that don't employ people in our city. And for those competitors, let them lose the competition. If they don't employ people in our city, then I'm not concerned about them. And I don't mind giving an untoward preference to the large. Our charter requires that preferences can only be, can't be smaller than the county borders. But it's our local economy is what matters here. Now, as far as Philadelphia, the six-month, 18-month place of business is less important than the fact that the Philadelphia ordinance specifically requires one of the following factors. More than half of the business's employee work in the city, or more than 50 of the business's employees work in the city at least 60% of the time. Same thing that we have here. So that's the key issue. 50 of the business's full-time employees work in the city at least 60% of the time. So, again, colleagues, I respect, this is an interesting discussion, and I think, you know, ideas that we have been talking about, about how we can further help small businesses, we ought to be considering. We ought to be figuring out ways that we can give additional preferences to our smaller businesses here. But that's not the policy that we're talking about today. The policy we're talking about today is hanging onto the jobs that we have, regardless of who's signing the paycheck.
We saw four speakers on the queue. Mr. Parks, Mr. Labange, Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I would just like, I think one of the points, first of all, in coming to Mr. Alarcon's issue, I don't think we can wait a year. We're talking about 10,000 jobs that might be available to either businesses stay in business, if they get these contracts, that they can add to their business, if they get these contracts. But to study something for a year that is within our purview does not seem to help our business environment. When we think about $1 billion, it's roughly $200 million going to businesses in LA County. If we increase that to 500 million or 700 million, you're gonna benefit the economy of this region. And that's what this ordinance is talking about, moving a higher percentage of what we already spend to businesses within the region. The other issue I think is important, when we hear the comment about national companies, our local businesses aren't competing with national companies now. They're not dealing with the volume, nor can the local stationery store compete with Staples. The issue is, is that those are false arguments, because these businesses by volume will determine whether they are eligible to compete for the contracts that are available. When we just recently went through a variety of filming incentives, not one of them involved creating new jobs in the city of LA. It was to retain them to do business in the city. Not one of them got a study from an economic evaluation, and not one of them did we ever get a sense of whether it was truly gonna create the revenue we thought. And so this is something I think that we have moved forward on these initiatives. We cannot lose by investing several hundred million dollars of our budgeted funds in businesses that are in our region. If we keep them in business and they grow, that's great. If people come and move into the city or the county, so they can apply for these grants or these-- or these funds, and these contracts, that's great. But to spend eighty-six percent of our money currently outside of this region does not make sense, and we need to correct that. I think the other issue is, as I mentioned earlier, and I'll make it in a motion, I make a motion that 10A go to committee, and that we have it reviewed by the mayor's business team, also that the professor from USC, and that it go to the jobs and budget and finance committee.
Okay. Thank you. We do have a second on that. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, anybody here been to Philadelphia? Independence Hall, where we crafted the Constitution, the room is half the size of this room. So we have great students who are here watching this, and we welcome the students who are here, and the great Angelinos. Give the Angelinos a big hand there. But I think what's so important, I'd like a local, L.A. city, you know, employee requirement for L.A. city employees, but that's not going to happen. I'd like all general managers to live in the city. That's not going to happen. I'd like to have more things in the city. That's not going to happen. But I think it's important, what Mr. Krikorian has done, which Mr. Parks has stated, that we go forward at this point right now, and constantly look at this stuff. This can evolve. I think we have to have more of a microscope on the picture, and use staff to look at things. The business team is focused to do that. We need to help in other areas, to use our universities, to give us some guiding light how we could match this. Recently, members at a fire station topping off program, where they put the final steel on top of the building, along with Chief Peaks, we greeted the workers. Every one of the workers lived in the Inland Empire. I would love to see those workers be L.A. city workers, not L.A. city employees, but guys who went to Franklin, or Jordan, or guys who went to any school in L.A. But they were all from the Inland Empire. We've got to work harder to train our people to compete for those jobs. At the same time, it's very important. So I stand again to salute the great city of Philadelphia and their Eagles, but also to say vote for this.
Mr., we start for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As Mr. Labange noted, we have some visitors, some students, twelfth-grade seniors from the government class of the Los Angeles High School of the Arts at the Robert F. Kennedy Community School. Welcome. And also with them are the teachers, Isabel Morales, Annie Simmons...
Go ahead, guys.
Kathy Kwan and Janet Nicholson. Welcome.
There you are. Channel thirty-five tonight at home. Thank you. Councilmember Alarcon is our next speaker, and then we will hear from Mr. Cardenas.
Councilmembers, you know, and by the way, I think there's a misunderstanding. When I said a year, I said, "If this were implemented as is, I would come back in a year with recommendations for improvement." I didn't say, "If we sent this back to committee, it would take me a year to fix it." It would take me one day to fix this, because it is not that difficult to fix. But I do want to read to you the regulations related to local business preference for procurement contracts in Philadelphia. I have it right in front of me, and when the senior advisor to the mayor tells you disingenuously that it's a six-month preference, let me read it to you. It says, "A business entity is eligible for certification as an LBE if the procurement commissioner determines that the business entity filed a business privilege tax within the city during the preceding twelve months. The business privilege tax returned must establish that the business entity conducted business within the city within the calendar year preceding the filing of the return, and during the preceding eighteen months, the business entity continuously maintained a valid business privilege license, and all other licenses and permits necessary to conduct business in the city, and during the preceding eighteen months, the business entity continuously occupied an office within the city where business is conducted, evidenced by a lease and ownership of a commercial space whereby the customary business operations of the business entity is conducted." And then it talks about the requirements here, but the city, what is being proposed here is basically, you just open up an office for six months, and you get an eight percent preference. It is not like the Philadelphia model. And so, what I am asking you is, right now, I think, you know, it would be prudent for us to send this back to committee, let us fix it, and I'll bring it back within a month. And it'll be a much stronger, better local preference that will affect truly local businesses, and not benefit multinational and national corporations, who will have a bigger advantage over local companies. You know, this is not something that we should be disputing, but I question why we can't do what I'm suggesting, create new jobs in Los Angeles as a requirement? Oh, my gosh, that's something, something's wrong with that idea. And then requiring a local business to actually be based in Los Angeles for eighteen months? What's wrong with that? You know, so, there's something going on here. I don't know what it is, but I strongly recommend that you send this back to committee.
We have Mr. Cardenas and then Mr. Krikorian.
If that was a motion, I second it.
Was that a motion, Mr.?
Alarcon, was that a motion?
Yes.
It was seconded by Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas?
Okay. Is that my turn? Thank you, Mr. President. Britt, see, basically, what I want to make sure that we do here, this is a legislative body, and our job is to legislate. Unfortunately, sometimes, we actually do a lot of the stuff that should have been done in committee here on the floor. But what Councilmember Alarcon pointed out, and being the chairman of the committee that this would go to, I think that it makes a lot of sense for us to get this correct and get it right, and then we can get it back here within thirty days. I don't understand what the rush would be if we took the proper amount of time to get it right. In addition to that, it appears to me is, with all due respect to you and your team, if you're going to sponsor a motion, and then you're going to be talking about a particular motion in another jurisdiction, or what have you, I would really appreciate it if you could make sure that we're afforded the opportunity to have that information, if you're going to hang so much of what you're saying on that particular document. I don't have the Philadelphia document, and I'm not saying it's your sole responsibility to make sure I have one. I have staff, too. But the thing is, you seem to be the sponsor, you and your team seem to be the sponsor of this. And the fact of the matter is, you're hanging a lot of what you're saying on a Philadelphia model, not only a model, but an actual ordinance that's actually in existence. And then you have a council member who's reading it to us, and it seems to be a little different. And also, something that I don't like, being that we're a bit different-sized city of Philadelphia, and most cities in this country, we're the second-largest city in the country, we have a little bit different responsibility here, especially when you just consider the volume of responsibility, the volume of contracts that we give out. As was mentioned, one point two billion dollars a year, not over ten years, a year. So the bottom line is, I think that this is a little bit too much cut and paste, and not enough of policymaking here within this body, in order for us to put a good document forward, that we will not have blow up in our face later, or later on find out that businesses have gone away, because we inadvertently created a disadvantage for some local businesses, especially the small and medium businesses. And I'll say again, the way I read it, I think that this is just as advantageous to some of the biggest companies in the world, that might have a hundred thousand employees around the world, but only a few hundred employees here in Los Angeles, and they will be unfortunately outbidding some of the companies that are actually based here in Los Angeles, that actually have the vast majority of their employees in this community, and also don't have shareholders spread around the world, but actually have all the benefactors, or the vast majority of the benefactors of that winning bid, actually spending their money in the region. And again, as a small business owner myself, in the city of Los Angeles, which is within the county of Los Angeles, I think that this is a great idea. I think that it's not ready to be voted on, and that's why I second Councilmember Alarcon's motion that we should send this back to committee, and then, he's true to his word, we'll have it before us within thirty days.
Mr. Westen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and members. Are you guys adverse to having this go back to committee for thirty days? Or less?
I mean, I don't see where it would be constructive.
That's not my question. I mean, what's thirty days? Is the sky going to fall in thirty days?
No, the sky's not going to fall thirty days.
So if, I mean, just to elevate everybody's comfort level, couldn't you allow it to go back to the appropriate for thirty days? And Mr. Krikorian, would you afford them that accommodation? And then we can move on. That's thirty days.
Mr. Westen, I think that it makes perfect sense to have Item 10A sent to committee for further study and analysis, but this matter that's before us has already been to committee, it's already been studied, and adding on last-minute changes to it now, I think, doesn't, I think we're ready to go with this.
Well, I'm ready, I'm ready to support it, but I think out of that professional courtesy, I would give them thirty days, if they have some concerns, to just go over the whole thing. I just don't think the world is going to end today, and it would seem to me that this would be the type of thing that, I don't think it would be counterproductive, but again, I'm committed to support this. If, within thirty days, it could be tweaked where it's even better, that's fine. So I'm just suggesting that maybe that's what we do, because we could probably debate this, you know, for another hour and so. I just don't think an additional thirty days is too much to ask for. That's all.
Mr. Krikorian?
Stand up and say Alarcon.
Mr. Krikorian? You're next on the queue.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I just wanted to respond again. Mr. Cardenas has raised the issue of, you know, could this create some disadvantage to a local business by giving undue preference to a larger business? And I'm especially sensitive to that argument, of course, because my district has the highest proportion of small businesses in the entire city, and the smallest businesses in the entire city. That cannot happen under this preference, because those local businesses, those local small businesses, will be given the precise same preference as the other larger companies that you're concerned about. So there cannot possibly be a disadvantage to a smaller business that doesn't already exist right now just because of the marketplace. And so I think that, respectfully, I think that is an argument that takes us off course. It doesn't have merit in terms of analyzing this policy that's before us. It may, in fact, raise the larger, another concern about, how do we level the playing field for small businesses who are trying to compete against large businesses? And we do have a small business preference already in this city, and I would look for ways that we can broaden that. But that's not the ordinance that's before us now. The ordinance that's before us now is about job creation, job preservation, regardless of the size of the employer, and it cannot possibly create any change in that marketplace balance between small and large businesses. It just doesn't, because any small business that's here already would be entitled to this very same preference. So, going forward, their competitive position with one another would be precisely the same.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Let me call the question.
All right. Mr. Reyes calls a question. Is there an objection to calling the question from anybody? Is there any objection? Once, twice? If there's no objection, then that will end debate. We have before us different motions. Mr. Clerk can explain this to the body, but as it was explained to me, we have Sections A and B. Essentially, Mr. Parks' motion asks to send Section A back to committee and to approve B today. Mr. Alarcon says to send it all back to committee. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk? Anything that I missed?
Yes, sir. There's the Alarcon-Cardenas motion to send the entire matter back to committee. There is the Parks-Krikorian motion to send recommendation 10A back to committee. Prior to that, Mr. Alarcon, excuse me, Mr. Alarcon, had circulated amending motion 10A.
Okay. So we go in reverse order, first...
Correct.
The first motion was the last made, so that is to send the entire matter back to committee. Okay? Everybody clear? Yes, vote sends it to committee? No vote does not? Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Four ayes, nine noes.
Okay, that is not, does not carry. Then we have Mr. Parks' motion to send A to committee, and to move forward with Section B. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
Okay, that carries. I'm sorry, Mr. Alarcon will be reported as a no. That'll be, that does not affect the outcome, so we'll correct that. It's eleven to two vote. And the, do we vote on the last motion as well, Mr. Clerk? Or is that made by the previous vote?
No, sir. That would still leave recommendation 10B, and the amending Alarcon-Hahn motion, which is 10A that was circulated, would affect recommendations within the second matter, 10B.
Okay. So we have, that's a written motion that's before us, 10A. There's a motion 10A. No, I'm sorry. When we said A and B, that was in the report, A and B. There is also a motion 10A, which is an amending motion. Okay. The clerk understood you were sending part A, so we will have to re-vote on that. Is that correct? Okay. So we do not need to vote on 10A, then? We'll have that in committee?
Okay. Most of the votes are in 10A.
Right. Correct. Right. Okay, so we'll take a vote on 10? Okay. Well, no, it's, just so you know, if there's any objection, why don't we clarify what the motion is? Mr. Alarcon, why don't you clarify what that motion is?
What I heard the clerk to say was that 10B goes together with the report, because it was a friendly amendment, to require businesses, or to allow businesses who are headquartered in Los Angeles to qualify for the preference.
Number what?
Mr. Parks, we need a clarification from you. Was your motion just about 10A, or was it?
Ten eight.
Okay. So we will now, we now have B before us.
And that was the verbal?
Right. Correct. Right, that's what I'm trying to clarify. There's an amendment that's called 10A. There is a Section A also. Okay?
Circulated one?
This has been circulated, 10A. Mr. Clerk, why don't you tell us what then is left before us?
What's left before council at this juncture is recommendation number, or, excuse me, letter B of the jobs committee report. Now, amending motion 10A, which was circulated, affects the recommendations contained within the jobs committee report, recommendation number B.
So we'll have to vote on that amendment. Is there any objection to that amendment? If not, it becomes a friendly amendment. Reminder to colleagues, anybody can object for it to be unfriendly, it's not just makers of motions. But if there's no objection...
Mr. Krikorian?
Mr. Krikorian, do you object to that?
I'm sorry. 10A amends the B section of the committee report. Yes. So we've already sent that to committee. We sent Item 10A to committee.
Okay. I think the clerk believed that Mr. Parks' motion was about the A section.
No, no, it was not. It was about Item 10A, the motion to add the fifty employees, to add the fifty new employees. That was Mr. Parks' motion. That's what I understood that we had voted on.
Yeah.
And Mr. Parks? If you clarify that, Mr. Parks, then that vote will stand as such, and there's no other vote remaining?
That's what we voted on, this in the committee.
If everybody understood that to be, I think it was just maybe the clerk would be respectful, who understood differently.
I wasn't dealing with this verbal motion that appeared that Mr. Krikorian accepted as a friendly. We're dealing with 10A, which is the written motion.
Okay. So 10A is in committee, the rest, it carries. We'll go to the next item. Let's take a vote of what was not sent to committee one last time. I believe that's what we just voted on, with Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Alarcon voting against, but the city attorneys asked us to vote one more time on what is left with A being sent to committee. Okay?
Mr. President, if I may, I want to, I want to make sure that everybody's clear on this, because I, for one, am not. There were, there was an underlying report, as it was presented by the committee, that dealt with my motion. That's, in my view, that's the only thing that remains before us now to be voted upon. There was a motion to send the entire matter back to the committee. That motion failed. There was Mr. Parks' motion to refer Item 10A, a written motion...
Amendment.
No, Item 10A, the written motion that was presented today by Mr. Alarcon and seconded by Ms. Hahn, to send this to committee.
Correct.
That passed.
Correct.
So what is now before us is the report as it was sent by committee.
Correct.
The entirety of that report.
Correct. That's why we were...
Very good. Thank you.
Please open the roll. Please open the roll.
It's worth an extra thirty seconds, you know, to know what you're voting on.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote. This is on the whole matter, that's why I was... Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, two noes.
That carries. Thank you, we will take that up in committee. Next item, please.
No, no. That brings us to Item Number Thirteen, called Special by Councilmember LeBange.
Yes. Mr. LeBange, Item Number Thirteen.
Mr. Reyes, I called this special knowing your interest, and then I'd like to say something after you. Thank you. Colleagues, this resolution essentially allows us to recognize the very first freeway in this, in this, in this country, actually. When we look at the great traditions that we have in Los Angeles, there's a group of businessmen who will start from Los Angeles on their wagons, pulled by horses, going down the road to go to the Rose Bowl, to see the Rose Bowl Games. And that muddy path became essentially the Parkway. That Parkway decades later becomes the candidate for the first highway, superhighway, as designed by this country in this corridor. So at that time, you have the Model Ts being presented as the new technology, high speed of twenty-five miles per hour. So people ask, why is the Pasadena freeway meandering so much? Why are the off-ramps so short and so dangerous? Well, back then, they wanted to make it fun and interesting to ride this corridor on their Model Ts, to essentially follow this passageway to the Rose Bowl. And to make it fun and exciting, they made it meandering, had it meander through this corridor, and created these really short on-ramps and off-ramps. Fast forward today, it's considered probably the most, one of the most scenic, historic, because it is the first freeway in this country. So I'm glad to see this happen. There's a lot of great work occurring with the City of Pasadena, with the neighborhoods of northeast, to bring forward this Parkway. It's been re-designated as the Royal Seiko Parkway. There's a master plan that's connecting with the River Master Plan, to bring back some of the old trails. Debs Park anchors one side, the other side has Sycamore Grove Park. We have the Gold Line paralleling, connecting the Southest Museum with Mona Hall with the Casa Verde, as well as the first center that speaks to being off the grid with the Audubon Society. Lot of good things happening. I'm very glad to have this presented before the council. I encourage a night vote. Thank you.
Mr. LeBange?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Parks. Let's give Mr. Parks a little hand right there. I want a little hand from Mr. Parks, who is the captain of our ship right today. Mr. President, I just stand and rise to thank Mr. Reyes. Historic preservation is so important, and yet the city built those tunnels. That was Figueroa Street, as it left through downtown. So it's a beautiful Parkway, it deserves recognition. All I hope one day, soon, they change the name of the Harbor Freeway to San Pedro. So it will show where people go, but this Royal Seiko, what great history. Call for a night vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Well done, Mr. Parks. Next item, please.
That brings us to, Item Number Nineteen, called Special for Cards.
We're gonna hold that on the desk for a moment. If we can go to the next item after nineteen, please.
Uh, that, that brings us to Item Number Twenty-four, called Special for Cards.
Thank you. John Walsh is our first speaker, Item Twenty-four.
Can we, uh, can we hold Item Nineteen on the desk?
Yeah, I just announced where you are.
Yeah. But you're gonna hear public comment right now?
Uh, we're holding, no, for Twenty-four. We're on to Twenty-four. We're holding Nineteen on the desk.
Okay, I thought I saw it up there. Okay, thank you.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, emailing at HollywoodDems@gmail.com, twittering at HollywoodDems. It's even colder now than the last time I got up here. Is this, you know, I'm losing... The high school kids walked out, and as they walked out, they said, "This place is worse than middle school." I'm telling you, as far as this is concerned, that I want the city attorney to attack me, now that he can't run for DA. Mitigating negative declaration for West Hubbard Street, we're one hundred percent in favor of this. And if you want to know more about West Hubbard Street and the local election, HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you.
We look forward to your posting there on West Hubbard Street. Next item, if we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate that vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
That brings us to Item Number Twenty-seven, called Special for Cards.
All right, Dana Garcia on Number Twenty-seven. Then we'll hear from John Walsh, and then from Arnold Sachs. Okay, you wave, all right. John Walsh, Item Twenty-seven.
Yes.
All right, he passes. Arnold Sachs, you can make it a three for if you want.
No.
All right, Mr. Sachs would like to be heard. Come on down.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. My concerns about another business improvement district are not so much with the business improvement district itself, but with the nonprofit that will be selected to run the business improvement district. Just taking a page from the downtown business improvement district and the art walk fiasco that's occurred, where they have twenty thousand people come downtown, and yet they don't have the funds to pay for the cleanup that's involved with having twenty thousand people come to a downtown event. Now, the city, I know, gave fifty thousand dollars to AEG for the, was a, was a holiday event special last month? And then there was another award of some, for Mr. Weston's district, a celebration that had sixty thousand people show up, and they got fifty thousand dollars. So I'm just wondering, getting back to the business improvement district, where the accounting comes from? Who will be accountable for this? Because these people will create this business improvement district, and again, a for-profit will be created to run the business improvement district and be out of the eye of anybody with any public interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on this item, and please tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved as well. Next item. Item Twenty-eight, called Special for Cards. All righty, Item Twenty-eight, Dana Garcia. After that is John Walsh, and Arnold Sachs.
One of the things, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that there is need for, people, there is need for, for accessible housing. In the housing, there is no accessible housing. There's not even one percent of, there's not even one percent of that accessible housing that is, that people would be, want to have. And the, and CRA does, that, that does not provide accessible housing. And what I'm asking here is to have a, in, in, mandatory accessible housing for people with disabilities, in general, in CRA must mandate is, is accessible housing, uh, uh, of two percent. I, I just, I just went, I just went to the accessible CRA last month, last month, and the, and the, and the number, and the number of affordable housing is four thousand affordable housing. Guess, guess, guess how many houses are, are accessible for people with disabilities? Zero, zero percent of accessible housing. We want, we want more housing, we want more housing that are accessible. And people will be demanding this, this for you. So please, pay attention about accessible housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. John Walsh is our next speaker. Arnold Sachs will follow him.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. See the mongoose defeat the cobra. And speaking of the cobra, you did a good job on domestic violence shelter operations program. That's what this is about. But let's make this a really important one, so that the whole world knows it. I think we should name it the Meg Whitman Domestic Violence Shelter Operations Program in conjunction with her son, Griff Harsh V., who is a perpetrator of domestic violence. And I promise you, I will, that words Meg Whitman will never come out of my lips for the rest of my life. HollywoodHighlands.org. Good riddance to Meg.
Mr. Walsh, whose name won't come out of your lips?
Just teeth.
All right, Ronald Sachs is our next speaker.
Thank you again, Arnold Sachs. Again, with a historical perspective, I believe last week you had a discussion in the chambers regarding a request for proposal, and that was at the airport, with a situation where the bids were written up, but the management was involved, sitting in the, in the discussions while the scoring was taking place. But the good news is, according to the councilman Parks, it was a beautiful request for proposal, very adequate request for proposal. I'm not too concerned about the request for proposals, I am concerned as how the awarding of the contracts take place. Who will be involved in deciding? Will you step up and say, "We don't want management sitting in while we have people scoring the requests." We don't want that influence of management on employees who are, have the duty of scoring the requests to find out if the requests for proposals are adequate. We saw what happened at the airport. And what was even better about the airport, even regarding jobs, was the winner of the, one of the contracts got up and said that, as a consortium, there was concerns about Magic Johnson and his selling his share. Well, as a consortium in the request for proposal, it was told to the council that even if he sells his share, his name will still remain. So what does that mean to the public? And what does that mean in the request for proposals? How will that affect your decision here if somebody is a part of a consortium and they want to sell a share and somebody else takes over for this, a new owner? Does the name stay on and the people running it change, or does it come back as a new request? More open, transparent government.
We will close public comment on this item. If no members wish to be heard, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. We have, next item, please. That brings us to Item Thirty-one, called Special for Cards. Item Thirty-one, Dana Garcia. After that is John Walsh. After that is Anchor Patel. After that is Arnold Sachs.
I want to encourage you to look at, to look at, uh, company, maybe economic, capital fund, capital partnership, economic, uh, system, and the, and the list goes on. I want to encourage you to look at, because I'm pretty sure that they do, they're doing the, they're doing the, actually support the VA. I want, I want company, I want company that they support the VA. They support, they support, they support the people who you work for. And the, and this company, this company are not very much in support of it. I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure about it, because I, because I haven't seen, I haven't seen the, the mass effective accessibility housing, housing that I, that I have to deal with them. And then, but I want to, please, please, make accessible housing priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, one million a year successful survey request. We have more successful survey requests than Zev Yaroslavsky has unsuccessful requests, or vice versa. CRA can't redevelop anything. We're very, very happy that a watchdog, the new watchdog, starting next year, will be Governor Jerry Brown over the CRA instead of Governor M-E-G-W-H-I-T-M-A-N-L-O-S-E-R-R-R, exclamation point. One hundred and forty reasons to forget her. Thank you. One hundred and forty million.
Anchor Patel is our next speaker, in Van Nuys.
Thank you. Politics is enriching one demographic or one group of people in order to retain your power. Right? These eleven firms are going to provide fiscal and financial consulting services on an as-needed basis. Doesn't the city have a treasurer's office and a financial team of its own? Don't we have bonds and bond ratings and all of these people who could consult, who could tell you what kind of financial things that need to be done? But here, we're gonna give two point five million dollars to these eleven companies, who I would suspect made campaign contributions to certain elected officials. Probably, huh? With dummy corporations? Now, the interesting part, another interesting part is the fiscal impact statement. Right? There is, the city administrative officer reports that there is no impact to the city general fund. No impact. This is two point five million dollars.
It's, uh, the CRA is separate from our city general fund, which is probably why it says that.
I, I understand that, but so much of this money goes to the CRA, which could be going to other places. And it's a shame that this entity has gotten so many political favors. It is in the politically connected crowd. I am not. And, and actuality, some of you councilmen probably aren't as politically connected as some of these businesses probably are. And you're city councilmen, right? As, as I get more involved and I'm learning, I'm going down this rabbit hole, I still don't know who is politically connected and who isn't. But two point five million dollars probably means you have some political connections.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs is our last speaker.
Thank you again, Arnold Sachs. Just to correct the last speaker, it's not a shame, it's a sham. What's really interesting that I find whenever you deal with the CRA is, is some of the explanations given here. The city's financial policies are not applicable to the CRA. The CRA is bound only by the disclosure provisions of the city's debt management policies. Well, if debt management isn't a policy, a part of the financial policy, then what exactly is debt management in refer, in reference to a financial policy? Does that mean you have carte blanche to spend whatever you want? My concern also is, you had an item on your agenda for businesses in the city of LA, with all the employees in the city of LA. So these eleven firms, are they all located within the city of LA? And how many of their employees are employed in the city of LA? And finally, are we getting, um, the eight to ten percent discount on this contract that was requested by the city council and all contracts that come up before the city, you know, for business? That was a, I believe, a motion that was passed by the city council when... That was a, I believe, a motion that was passed by the city council when we had the brilliant discussion over the budget crisis that you solved so adequately? Is this $2.5 million, 10% less, or is it because this is a CRA, it's not affected by that 10% clause in business contracts? Just some questions to ponder and ask. Thank you for your time. Enjoy the pizza.
All righty. That will close the public comment on this item. Any members wishing to be heard on this? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. We can go and call the roll for the special meeting, please. Hello, Concarde Nissan, Weezer, Corretz, Corrigan, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendell, Smith, Weston, Zion, Garcetti, twelve members present, and a quorum, Mr. President. All righty. First item, please. That brings us to item 41. It is an item for which a public hearing has been held. Okay? Anybody wishing to call 41 special? Ms. Han.
I'd like to call 41 special.
All right. It is before us then, and I'll recognize you to begin our discussion.
Where's my stuff? Oh, here it is.
It's just a one-item special meeting, so with that, we'll discuss 41.
Great. Thank you, colleagues. This item is something, you know, I think I've been talking about it for about a year and a half, and that's our ability to place some kind of a tax on our medical marijuana clinics. I actually would have tried to push through something to be on yesterday's ballot, but as you remember, we were told that it was going to cost, you know, $4 million if we put something on yesterday's ballot. But I think if you look at the election results, every city that had something on the ballot that referred to taxing medical marijuana clinics passed overwhelmingly. I mean, like 70%, 75%, 80%. So I think voters, whether or not you have an opinion about marijuana, whether or not you have an opinion about medical marijuana, most cities are looking to gain some revenue from these clinics. So what I'd like to put before the voters on the March ballot is, and by the way, there's an amendment to, where is my amendment? Do I have our amendment? Because what's before you, I think, is an ability to tax the plants. Well, we decided taxing the plants is probably a little convoluted, too difficult, and I think it's too labor-intensive for our staff. So we looked at some of the other ordinances that are out there, some that have passed, and the idea is to put a $50 per thousand dollars of their gross reimbursements. As you know, in the city of Los Angeles, our ordinance does not speak to gross receipts. Our ordinance does not speak to sales, because we've been told by our city attorney and our district attorney that that's illegal. But what we decided in our ordinance was that reimbursements for the cost of the growing and providing the medical cannabis was legal. So we can place a $50 per $1,000 of their gross reimbursements that they get in these clinics. And by the way, we've been working with the advocates, the original medical marijuana task force, workforce in the city, and they've never opposed us taxing them. They've never opposed us trying to see some revenue from these clinics. And I think they felt like this was a fair, reasonable way to do it. Let me just tell you what some of the other cities are doing. Oakland is doing $50 per 1,000 of gross receipts. Berkeley is $25 per 1,000 of gross receipts. La Puente is doing $100 per 1,000. Sacramento, $40 per 1,000. Long Beach is considering $50 per 1,000. Richmond is $50 per 1,000, and San Jose is $100 per 1,000. So we think, you know, based on a very, very conservative projection, that we could see probably between $3 and $5 million annually. I think it's going to be a lot more. I think we don't know that. But I think the voters are going to pass this. I'm completely convinced, based on yesterday's results. Voters agree with this. So I want to make sure we put on the ballot one that is fair and reasonable, but also will allow us to see some revenue based on the medical marijuana clinic. So I hope they have your support today to put this forward on the March ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendall.
Yes, is there anybody from the CLA's office, CAO, on this and the city attorney's office? I'd like to get a little background play on this. I think Ms. Han is absolutely right about taxation. Frankly, of course, you all know that I thought Prop 19 made sense, and we should have voted yes on it and regulate and tax and deal with that, but the people didn't, and so here we are again. The question is for staff, what is exactly what this would do to the clinics? And I mean the clinics, there's the recognized ones, the unrecognized ones. We have literally hundreds of them out there, still open and in business, regardless of what we've done or not done, they're there, and they're bringing in lots of money. And the question is, are we able to tax the legitimate ones, the illegitimate, whatever we have out there that's open right now in our city? And I don't know if that's 200, 300, 400. City attorney, have any idea what the numbers are? I know what's been approved as legitimate, what's been approved as illegitimate, but I see them all open in lots of places. Would we be able to tax absolutely every medical marijuana clinic, which is obviously what I would like to do as well? Your name, please, for the record.
Deputy City Attorney Dan Whitley. We can tax currently every medical marijuana establishment under our current taxing system, under our gross receipts tax. As it stands now, they're taxed. Now, under our current ordinance, I believe we have 186, is that correct, that are going to be getting a license under our, our...
No. The actual number is a little unclear. As you recall, there were 186 that had filed before the ICO.
Yeah, yeah. And then there were a few hundred more.
Well, there were a few hundred more, but what your ordinance calls for is that of those 186, as long as they meet the requirements of the ordinance, they could be grandfathered in.
Yeah, yeah.
The city clerk reported that only 40 of the original 186 met the requirements. So my understanding is that's still being played out, my understanding is that that's been challenged.
But my question is, right now, there's hundreds of clinics out there, be they legit or illegit, they're out there, I see them. Are we getting from them the sales tax, those stores that are out there right now? Or just the 41 or 187, or the hundreds of them that are still there? Do we know?
Well, not the sales tax.
They're not getting sales tax.
There is gross receipts, we're getting gross receipts tax.
Well, move back up a second. The city directly collects a gross receipts tax from the medical marijuana establishments that voluntarily self-report. Well, they do, if they voluntarily self-report, as it currently stands, they are classified under our retail classification. They do pay sales tax, that's collected by the Board of Equalization through the state. We do get a small percentage of that.
Okay. How many are registered that way in the state that are bringing in that?
I don't know.
Is it somebody from the Treasury's office, or somebody that knows that?
We need to get that from the Board of Equalization from the state. We don't have that information readily available to us.
Okay. One thing I just want to say real clearly, we need to know what's going on out there in the city. How many are there? And how much gross receipts or sales tax they're paying to the state? And how much of that we're getting back as a city? Be they the legal ones or the illegal ones? I'm not even going there, I'm just talking about them out there now. So I want an answer back on that issue. If we could find out through Board of Equalization, through our city attorney's office, through Building and Safety, LAPD, I don't care where we get the numbers of clinics, but are they all paying that sales tax? Which I'm assuming they are. And if they're not, that's another issue for me. But as for Ms. Han's motion, it's a no-brainer, obviously, that $50 for the gross of 1,000 is a step in the right direction. I believe in regulating and taxing the existing health clinics, or whatever we call them, the story is. But we need to know the facts, and we don't have the facts here, right? Am I wrong on that?
We can try and get that information. The city attorney's office won't have it, the office of finance may, like, try and get that information.
I always think the office of finance would know what kind of money they get, and why they get a certain percentage, and how many clinics that involve, I mean, these are numbers, they don't lie, they're factual. And I'm assuming that every one of them out there, be they illegal or illegal, are paying those gross receipts or sales tax or whatever the story. That's a second issue than her motion, but obviously, I want to go forward with her motion, but I want to report back on what we know and don't know, because there could be what I call historically gold in the gutter. Money that we should be getting as a city, that we're not getting from these clinics. Can we count on that?
As I said, I don't, we don't have that information in my office.
Can I make a motion, Mr. Parks, to report back to Budget Committee from our city? The clinics out there, are they paying their sales tax? How much revenue is the city getting? Have a second on that? Okay. There's a verbal motion, Mr. President.
It's separate.
It's separate from this motion, but we're making a separate verbal motion that the city attorneys, the office of the Treasury, CLA and others, find out exactly how many clinics are out there, how many are paying a sales tax, and what kind of revenue the city's getting. I mean, that's just information, and Mr. Parks has seconded that.
Okay.
And I don't consider that tied into her motion for the ballot measure, but it came up.
Get that information, you got it.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernard Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as the city attorney, we've gone through this before, but maybe you could remind us about, you did a city attorney's opinion on taxation, and could you give us what the city attorney opined on that?
Certainly. With respect to a gross receipts tax and medical marijuana establishments, under our Medical Marijuana Collective ordinance, the medical marijuana collectives are entitled to get reimbursements and reasonable compensation for providing medical marijuana to their members. The amounts that they collect would be considered gross receipts under 21.00, as defined by our gross receipts tax. We don't believe those amounts will be very large, because they're only entitled to get reasonable compensation for the amounts that they're provided. However, under Section 21.22 of our LA Municipal Code, charitable organizations are exempt from our gross receipts tax. So we don't believe that there will be any ability to have a gross receipts tax applied to medical marijuana collectives. These should be generally charitable organizations. They're defined as such under our ordinance. In subsection B, it says that none of these collectives shall operate for a profit.
Now, what about, I thought one of the opinions you gave dealt with the issue that federal government, in the sense of prohibition of state regulating marijuana, it's on a Schedule I drug, how does that reconcile?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
No, I said, I thought one of the city attorney's opinions dealt with the fact that it's a federal, it's illegal on a federal statute, and that it is basically prohibits states from regulating the issue of marijuana, because the federal government preempts that.
We don't believe that that will prohibit us from taxing the drug necessarily.
Even, that's one of the things that's confusing, we could tax something that's illegal.
No. With respect to the sale of, I'm sorry, Peter Chivari from the city attorney's office, the sale of marijuana itself is prohibited.
You can do my, Peter.
The sale of marijuana is prohibited, so there can be no gross receipts based on the sale of the marijuana itself. If there were a gross receipts tax applied, and what Mr. Whitley's referring to, it would apply only to those reimbursements for utilities and other expenses of running the collective, but not to any sale, because there can't legally be a sale of the marijuana itself. The additional point is that as nonprofits, they're exempt from taxation such as a gross receipts tax. They're exempt from it under state law. So we cannot tax a nonprofit on their gross receipts as well, even on the reimbursements.
Then what are we proposing to tax if it's illegal to sell? What are we...
Correct.
On this particular motion?
Well, that, that's the issue. As a legal matter, we're not sure what, but we would tax as a gross receipts tax.
I mean, if we're going to fill out a charter, what are we saying that we're going to tax? Are we taxing the sale, which is illegal? Are we taxing that you have a certain quantity? Are we taxing, what are we taxing?
Well, as I read the measure, it looks like we would be taxing, that the tax would be imposed on, it'd be imposed on the reimbursements and reasonable compensation, not on payments for the marijuana, so we'd have to...
But that, we said earlier, that's the same as gross receipt tax? Is this a separate in gross receipts, or are we going to tax it, the reimbursements twice?
Well, this would have to be a separate tax, so this would not be a tax on gross receipts, this would have to be something separate.
Okay. Well, then, tell me, what are we going to tax as it relates to this motion? What is it specifically? If it's not on the sale, then what are we taxing? That's not a good sign when the city attorney shrugs.
That's something that we'll have to, assuming this motion passes, we'll have to try and figure that out when we draft it. At this time, the only cost I could think of would be perhaps the cost of operating the facility itself, perhaps rent and electricity.
So you could tax the fact that they have to rent a facility?
Maybe the rent, the electricity.
Let me give this a stab. I think the intent here is, as a practical matter, when medical marijuana is being delivered to the patients, most of the patients will pay some money. Now, that money can only be reimbursed for the costs of providing that. There will be cultivation costs, there will be rental costs, there will be reasonable salaries for employees, all of that is allowed under the ordinance. So there will be, so to the extent that there is that exchange of money, then the intent is that this tax would apply to that. Now, in theory, there could be collectives of three or four people, and there aren't, isn't any money changing hands. In that event, this wouldn't apply, but this would apply to those collectives where money is changing hands to reimburse for the costs of providing the medical marijuana.
I think we discussed in one of the previous media series, it'd be almost impossible to determine if money's changing hands, is it for the reimbursement or for the sale? And there's no way that law enforcement could make that distinction, because they're just merely going to see the marijuana go in one hand and money go in the other, and that's what the big concern was initially, about providing a license or some form of a city permit for the housing of a business that may be involved with illegal activity. So that was the whole issue of medical marijuana in the first place. So now, if we're going to tax, compound it with a tax on that transfer of money for cultivation, and then if it's accurate from the city attorney's record, many of these, they found that much of the product coming in is not locally cultivated.
Mr. Parks, if you can press your button again.
Oh, my God.
Ms. Han did point out you're a little over, and I'd like to apologize to her and the entire body of the letting you go.
Can I get an answer to those 12 questions?
When you press your button, it'll be for the third time. But if we can have those answers, and then we'll go to Mr. Labange next. Go ahead, gentlemen, if you'd like to answer those 65 questions.
Okay. Well, again, the ordinance, again, we're talking about really a situation that is still getting set up. But the ordinance does require, like any other, I won't call them businesses, because they're not, but like any other entity, their books are going to be subject to audit. And they can, under the law, only charge, or they can only recover the costs of providing the medical marijuana. So there will be an opportunity to inspect, you know, inspect the books and identify any money that's changing hands, like any other entity.
Mr. Labange, your time is...
Pass.
Mr. Weezer is next.
Thank you. And I'm going to support this today, but with the understanding that when the city attorney comes back with an ordinance, that you not only look at drafting an ordinance to implement what we are asking to implement, but look at the larger legal issues involved with this, because I'm still not as convinced that this may be possible. So I just want to make sure that the city attorney comes back to us with the ordinance, but it also raises all the other larger legal issues involved with the new paradigm that we've created, given state law and federal law, because we are walking a very fine line here. And many different jurisdictions, municipal jurisdictions, have taken a different approach to the state law. We've taken one, and within our ordinance, we've got to make sure that we're following the intent and purpose of whatever we've created here locally. So I look forward to getting those larger legal issues as well, as well as the ordinance. So by us approving this today, I hope the city attorney doesn't say, "This is what they want." I would assume you will also advise us as your client as to the larger legal issues involved. involved, and to make sure it coincides with our ordinance that we've created, and any possible conflict with federal law. Thank you.
Mr. Cardness.
Oh, my turn. I thought Ms. Han.
Yeah, really.
Oh, she already spoke?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Pete Echeverria, you're one of our city attorneys, right?
One of them, yes.
Did I hear you write, that you said that marijuana is not being sold in the City of Los Angeles?
No, I said that it's not being sold legally.
Oh, it's not being sold legally in Los Angeles? So basically, what's before us is, we can only tax some, the portion of, the, I don't want to say transaction, the portion of activities in and around these facilities other than the actual sale of marijuana?
Legally, that's what we're able to tax, if we're able to tax anything at all.
Everything other than the sale of actual marijuana?
Correct.
So we're, as a city, we're kind of in a quandary because there was a state initiative passed by the voters that said people can have medicinal marijuana distributed to them within the state, but for some reason, the City of Los Angeles doesn't recognize that?
No, actually, what the initiative and the implementing subsequent legislation provides is that marijuana can be grown by individuals who have a medical care, who have a need, and also that it can be provided to them, grown and provided to them by caregivers. That's the extent of it, not sold to them.
Oh, not sold to them?
Correct.
So how are people acquiring it if they're actually exchanging money for that?
That's a good question that we have posed regularly to every collective who has challenged the ordinance, how are they acquiring the ordinance, the marijuana, and they generally have no answer.
Okay. We have a city staff member who has an answer to one of the questions?
Hi, Larry Minocchio with the Office of Finance. Getting to the question of the taxation, and the motion, I think, is calling for reimbursed expenses to be taxed, and the city does tax reimbursed expenses. However, the current medical marijuana ordinance stipulates that the medical marijuana is for nonprofit, and as such, then they wouldn't be subject to our taxes.
Not-for-profits are not subject to our taxes, correct?
Correct. Whether they be gross receipt tax or reimbursed expenses. In fact, the current ordinance doesn't even require the dispensary to be registered with our Office, the Office of Finance. That's not one of the requirements. So I don't know what mechanism, at least with the, with our business taxes, that we would be able to tax medical marijuana.
Darn it. So we might not be able to tax?
Yes, we can.
In and around this activity?
Well, not as a gross receipt or as a reimbursed expense, no.
Thank you.
Ms. Han.
Thank you. Okay, with all due respect to our finance guy, city attorney, currently, and colleagues, this is Ralva's, this is where we're going, currently, we cannot place a tax on gross receipts of our medical marijuana clinics since our city attorney says that these are not sales of marijuana under our current ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
However, our current ordinance does allow for cash contributions, reimbursements, and reasonable compensation by members toward the collective's operation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we can place a tax based on those transactions?
Not if it's characterized as a license tax, which the state law preempts us from putting it on a nonprofit business.
But can't, that is in our code.
No, that is state law.
And so we cannot put before the charter?
Correct. Even if you, even if the voters approve it, state law preempts us.
Okay, tell me how the other cities are doing this. Tell me how Oakland, where's my list? Tell me how Oakland, Berkeley, La Puente, Sacramento, Long Beach, Richmond, San Jose, how are they doing this?
We can only give you our best legal advice. I don't advise those cities, and I have not had discussions with their attorneys, although Mr. Whitley has been in contact with them, and they've not provided satisfactory answers, at least with Oakland, as to how they're able to do it.
Well, colleagues, I, you know, I will tend to disagree with the advice. I think this is something, again, that we can do. We've been in touch with our city attorneys on my motion, so I don't know which city attorney was advising me that we actually could do this. So I would ask that we vote to put this on the ballot in March, that we have a gross receipts of reimbursements, fifty dollars per a thousand. Each of these collectives, by the way, keep very strict records. They have to account for their contributions, their reimbursements, in terms of the operations of their collective. So I believe that we can put this on the ballot, and I believe that we can tax this part according to our city ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcón.
Is there anything in state law that prohibits us from imposing a fee on the permit?
A permit fee?
Yeah.
To recover the costs of the permitted activity, that that would be permissible? Yes?
And we could, I'm sure we could demonstrate that there's a significant cost to the police department and city attorney to regulate this business?
It would have to be established through a study that justifies the fees, the regulatory fees.
So, Ms. Han, I don't know if you heard, but there's nothing that prohibits us from establishing a fee and tie it to the permit. Could we do that based on the amount of business they're doing?
I'm sorry?
Could we do it on the basis of the amount of business they're doing? Do we have any fee? Where are we?
No, I'm sorry, regulatory fees are required to be tied to the level of effort and the expense for that effort that the government entity...
So we're entitled to full-cost recovery?
Correct.
So we could, so we're entitled to full-cost recovery, we would just have to determine what that is. So if Ms. Han wanted to place a matter on the ballot that asked the voters if we should charge these kinds of organizations for full-cost recovery, that would be fine?
I apologize, I'm sorry. I was distracted. May I hear the question again?
No.
I'm sorry.
If we put, if Ms. Han wanted to put a measure on the ballot that said that we would charge businesses for full-cost recovery, we could put that on the ballot?
You...
Or we wouldn't even have to put that on the ballot, we could just vote for that?
You could, but you don't have to. Regulatory fees can be adopted without a charter amendment.
So you could just introduce a motion.
If it were a regulatory fee, but then you can only recover the costs that you actually incur for the regulation.
Then, how? Do you want to move it, or do you want me to move it?
For full-cost recovery, in terms of what?
Getting back the cost for regulating this industry, for sending police officers, special investigations, council meetings, what? Audits?
Actually, colleagues, what I'd like for us to do today is to move forward on putting this on the March ballot the way I described. As Jose Weisar said, we expect the city attorney to bring back an ordinance that is legal. So, yeah, I know, I'm on your time, I'm on your time.
Did I finish?
You said my name.
It's like, it's like that Chatty Cathy dog, you mention it, boom. Well, anyway, I would like to get a report back on the alternative method to explore full-cost recovery and charging this, the industry for full-cost recovery.
Yes.
Actually, Mr. Alarcón, part of the ordinance also does require building and safety come back with a fee schedule to do the inspections and enforcements. So that really is a separate issue, there's efforts in the works to do exactly...
Is it a fee schedule relative to building and safety costs, or to total cost to the city?
It would be, it would be the cost of enforcement, which would also include LAPD costs and the larger non-direct costs. No, as Mr. Echeverria said, through the fee process, you can't do that.
Well, all I'm saying is, full-cost recovery, that's everything, and I don't think building and safety's fees are going to cover that.
They will not cover the kind of costs you're talking about, and that's the discussion of putting some sort of a tax on the ballot, which every other city that has this seems to have been able to do.
This is an attack. I'm asking for, I'm asking for a report back on what full-cost recovery would entail, and what would take for us to impose a fee, and Ms. Han is asking for something else. I just want a report back on it.
I think that's, I think that's fair, but I also think the city attorney begin the draft this, for the March ballot.
Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you. Janice?
Okay, go ahead, you can take the rest of his three minutes if you'd like.
I just wanted to mention your name, but I just, Pete, I think you wrote this, but the October 15th letter from the city attorney that deals with taxation of marijuana, could you give us some assumptions of what the city attorney's office is advising?
I should never sign these things. I'm sorry, you want me to sign them, I suppose?
Just give us what, the October 15th letter, and I think the title is Taxation of Marijuana Sales. She'd never taught me how to use a computer.
Actually, it's not my signature, it's Mr. Carter's signature.
Okay.
But it's our office.
All right.
And the summary is that it's, this office is positioned that the city should not allow and tax marijuana sales, which would effectively amount to a sanctioning of illegal activity.
And I think, Ms. Han, your comment about Oakland, I think the newspaper article is accurate, said that the city attorney there said this almost identical thing, but the city council ignored that advice and went forward on it, and I think that was what the article reflected. But I think that letter pretty well, in my judgment, gives us some guidance as to, we should not be going forward on taxation of an illegal act, and as we mentioned in one of the discussions, it's the only business in the city that has to start with an illegal act. You have to gain marijuana through some source to create the business, and so therefore, being that you can't sell it, and it doesn't, it's not the immaculate conception, you have to find a seed somewhere that's illegal to then produce it under this term. So I would suggest that we not go forward on putting forth a ballot measure.
All right, that is our last speaker on the queue.
I call for the question.
Mr. Labange, we definitely asked her to call for the question.
We're done.
So, Mr. Clerk, we have, there's been a couple motions, I believe, before us. Would you walk us through them? Item 41A has amending motion, Han, Alarcón, which is before you. Mr. Rosendahl had also introduced a motion, seconded by Mr. Parks, instructing the city attorney, CLA and Office of Finance to report back to the Budget and Finance Committee regarding how many clinics currently exist and how many are currently paying sales tax. All right, so first, since 41A is an amending motion, is there a, an objection to that? 41A?
Rosendahl's motion.
No, no, 41A is the circulated one. Mr. Rosendahl's motion, I don't think there's any objection to, so we'll make sure that that gets attached. 41A is to request the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance and, to present to the voters, to a measure to establish a tax of fifty dollars per thousand dollars of cash and in-kind contributions, reimbursements, and compensation provided by members of medical marijuana collectives. And is this actually a substitute amendment? Okay. So please open the roll. Folks, we're going to open the roll, please open the roll? And this is just the preparation of it to be, just to, I think Ms. Han wanted to clarify, this is just the preparation of it, it's not, it's not yet the vote to place this on the ballot, this would be preparation, okay? Yes?
Just to bring back the ordinance.
So, yeah, so the legal advice will come simultaneous with that.
The legality of it, yeah.
It will come back, and it'll have the legal advice and the draft.
Correct.
Okay, everybody clear? Please open the roll again. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
All right, that will be prepared for our consideration. And so is there, since that's substitute, should we vote on the overall thing now, Mr. Clerk? We'll vote on that, it's a repeat vote essentially, since that was to substitute, folks? So people will probably want to repeat their vote on this, this is now to vote on it as amended. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
Okay. The drafting and analysis will come back to us. If we can, please adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting. And item 19, Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 19 is an item that would ask our voters to decide whether we would have ranked choice voting in the City of Los Angeles. This is part of a three-part proposal that we put forward in the last few days. I would ask that we have this item, go back to Rules and Elections. I get the sense from speaking to others that this still needs to be thought through, but I understand that the clerk will be in discussions with, with the county on their development of their voting machinery, which they are, they're on the works, and they will also come back to Rules and Elections Committee with the actual costs, if any, of making ranked choice voting a component of the new machinery that the county's coming up with. So, Mr. President, I ask that we move this to Rules and Elections, send it to Rules and Elections, and also I want to thank some of the advocates who've been working with us on this, and you've been here at every meeting, you've been here advocating for it, but I think we've gone a long way, given the vote by mail to single districts, special elections, and also on lifting the cap for matching funds. Those are going to be two changes that I think they're going to make and improve the way we vote and the way the city functions, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. If there's no objection to the substitute?
Yeah.
Substitute motion is to send it to committee and ask for a report on...
Yeah, well, actually, I want to withdraw the motion, the amending motion that was submitted, and send the file back to Rules and Elections.
Okay, all right, just so the file will be sent back. Without objection, we will send that to Rules and Elections Committee. Thank you. Next item, please. That leaves item 40, which is an item scheduled for closed session. Okay, now pursuant to California state law, we will go into closed session to discuss legal matters that are before the council...
Special one.
Oh, sorry, before everybody leaves, we do have a special one. Why don't we take that while we're still in open session, it's a reward motion. If we can, please, on the findings, Madam City Attorney.
Since the posting of today's agenda, the Los Angeles Police Department has asked the city council to offer a reward to lead to the arrest of two individuals who raped and battered a 13-year-old young lady. Immediate action is required for the protection of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
On the findings, if we can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Pursuant to Rule 23, that is before us, Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry, did you want to speak on the substance, or you just want to take a vote? Okay. Well, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forth with to the mayor for that reward motion immediately, and we will make sure that folks know to publicize any information about that. As was announced, we do have one closed session item for item number 40. In pursuant to California state law, we'll now go into closed session to discuss legal matters with our city attorney. We'll come back into open session, and anything that requires a vote in open session will be announced then. If we can clear the council chambers, and we'll be right back. And to our viewers on Channel 35, enjoy the public service announcements. Channel 35, enjoy the public service announcements. We're back in open session, we have a settlement offer before us on item number 40, if we can walk through what that is, Mr. City Clerk, or Madam City Attorney, whoever, Mr. City Clerk.
There's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $350,000 in the case entitled Brian Sworensson versus City of Los Angeles.
All right, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral, this will be posted and referred, and there are excuses on the desk.
All right, let's run through those excuses.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused on February 4th, 8th, 9th, and 11th in the year 2011 for personal business, that meets city, or excuse me, that meets council policy.
All right, he is excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to arrive at noon on November 17th for city business, that meets council policy.
Mr. Parks is excused.
Councilmember Zion requests to leave at 12:15 on November 16th for city business, that meets council policy.
That, that councilmember is excused?
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused on November 17th and December 7th for city business, that meets council policy.
And Mr. Reyes is accused.
And Councilmember Alarcon requests to be excused on April 19th, 20th, and 22nd, 2011 for city business, that meets council policy.
All right, he is excused as well. The desk is clear. All right, any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to invite the community to important meetings regarding the Crenshaw LAX line tomorrow, 6 to 8, discussion on Crenshaw MLK and Crenshaw Vernon stations, 6 to 8 p.m. at the fort at the DWP facility at 4030 Crenshaw, and on Saturday, November the 6th, is a discussion on the Florence La Brea station, be held at Faithful Central Church, 400 West Florence, between 10 a.m. and 12 noon.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements?
Tonight, we will be celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Walk of Fame in Hollywood, and we will have the largest collection of recipients of the Walk of Fame stars ever assembled in one place, that will be at Hollywood and Highland. We'll be putting a time capsule on the corner of Hollywood and Highland for 2060 in place, and we will be taking a historic picture of many notable stars and contributors to music, movies, television, theater, and radio tonight, and that is at 6:30 p.m. at Hollywood and Highland. Any other announcements? If not, can I please ask everybody to rise for our adjournment motion?
If I can ask everybody to rise, please.
Have a, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Reyes? And we'll begin with Ms. Han, and we'll come back to, and to Ms. Perry, Ms. Han.
Thank you, I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of my neighbor, Edmund Eddie Hughes, who passed away suddenly on September 17th. He was on vacation with his family in Zion, Utah. Eddie was born in 1929 in San Pedro, and he attended school in San Pedro, graduated from San Pedro High School in the summer of 1947. He went on to play professional baseball with the New York Yankees Farm Club until he was drafted to the U.S. Army, where he served in the Korean Conflict. He returned a professional ball when he returned home from the service. On New Year's Eve, 1953, he married Pauline Morrow. He went to work for the U.S. Postal Service until his retirement in 1989, and I believe he was a carrier in our neighborhood. He survived by his wife, Pauline, his daughters Debbie and Diane, Diane's husband, Jerry, his brother Kenneth, uncle, Robert Costa, many grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and cousins.
Ms. Perry.
I would like to return in memory of Arlene Shelton, who was 85 years old. She was a beloved community leader and activist in the 9th Council District. Her spirit and attitude were undeniably positive, and she will be remembered and deeply missed.
Any other adjournment motions? If not, we'll next be in session this Friday, that's November 5th. Colleagues, remember, this weekend, we'll be setting our clocks for daylight savings this weekend, on Saturday. You'll get an extra hour of sleep, but sunset will come an hour earlier. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk. And this meeting of Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a great day, and we'll see you on Friday.